Good evening, we're gonna start the meeting tonight, Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. We're gonna go into executive session at, what time? 7:23, thank you. And we're gonna discuss 2.1 Legal Matter District, 2.2 Legal Matter District, and 2.3 Negotiations Matter. And can I have a motion?
Someone.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you, be right back shortly. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna call the meeting to order again. It is January 24th. It's coming back from executive session, where we discussed 2.1 Legal Matter, 2.2 Legal Matter, and 2.3 Negotiations Matter. If I can ask everyone to rise.
There is no flag. If you can look out that door, you can see a flag. Let's do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, welcome, everybody. Happy New Year. It's our first meeting in the new year. We're excited to be back. Let's see. We have no revision tonight, right? No, any comments from the public tonight? Okay, here none. Can I get a motion, please, to approve Consent Agenda?
Adopt the agenda first.
Oh, sorry. Oh, adopt the agenda, thanks, sorry, thank you, thank you. Yes, can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Hold on a second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, we had nothing from the public. And motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, 6.1 Personnel. And just to name all of them now, right?
You could just say Personnel, Special Services, and Business.
Okay, Personnel, yes. Special Services and Business tonight. And a second. And all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Something very special just happened.
Yes.
So, we have accepted the retirements.
You do that?
Go ahead.
No, 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 I said I'd like when I do something, and something's right there.
I was gonna say, go ahead and say what I was just gonna say. If you like it, though, go ahead, go ahead. But we, something special just happened in that we have two teachers who are retiring. And it's special for them and very sad for us. We don't want them to go. And they have a few moments to come in here and ask us to rescind this plan. But after tonight officially, we've received and accepted Kathy Wilkins in kindergarten and Lisa Jacobson, first grade. Each of them have 20 years of service to the district. So, that's not happy news for us, but it's special news for them because that's a big decision to make. And we only hope they come back in some capacity, as many of our retirees do. It's hard to leave us, we hope you think that. It's hard for us to leave.
All right, okay. Moving on, are we gonna go to our special report tonight? Budget Hearing 1.
Yep, I will take that over. So, tonight for Budget Hearing 1. Yeah, we're gonna start with that, take a second. Well, they're excited. Yes, so, tonight we have our principals with us. We have Peggy McInerney from Coleman Hill, Dave Mack, our principal of Wampus Elementary School, Kim Lappel at the middle school, and Chris Walsh at the high school. And behind them for a conversation later, we have Melissa Stahl from World Languages and ENL. And we have Kim Supone from Special Services. But for the purpose of tonight's budget hearing, we are going to talk about our continued focus on fiscal responsibility, on programs, and on facilities management in the buildings. And we always like when the principals come at the outset of this meeting to talk to us about how their budgets for their buildings are aligned with what their priorities are for each of their buildings. So, we know that we try as hard as we can to make a cost-effective budget. And we have a lot of parameters when we do a budget that are out of our control, like health insurance increases, TRS, ERS. But something that is very much in our control is a principal's ability to look at what kids need in their building and what teachers need to support kids. So, this is a part of our budget that I've asked the principals this year to focus on two main questions for the board when you're talking tonight, about how the building budget supports programs and schools. What are some of the highlights that this budget provides for you? And then, how do the increases reflect the goals that you have? So, everyone will talk about that, and then some. Just understanding that we have programs, we have facilities, we have fiscal responsibility, and we have the tender youngsters of this community at our charge every single day in the decisions that we're making. So, these are our heroes in our buildings who are making sure that that's happening on behalf of kids. And I'm excited tonight to have them talk to us a little bit about their goals. So, why don't we, shall we start with Peggy?
I go first?
Sure, start with our youngest learners. A term I learned from Peggy.
So, thank you, really thank you all for your continued support. We couldn't be where we are today without all of you and your volunteering and generosity to us. So, thank you. In terms of Coleman Hill and the budget, returning to Coleman Hill, the last six months has been really special. I think it's taught me a lot more about my leadership styles in terms of what our children need, what our teachers need, and what our community needs. So, I think all of those changes in my career really present opportunities for me to become a stronger leader for what our community needs. And currently, the focus on Coleman Hill is really the whole child. So, when we talk about programs at Coleman Hill, really the most important thing for me is the child. And the child is what drives our programs, not programs driving our children. So, I think I'm gonna give you some quick card data, but really, for Coleman Hill, it's really about the soft data. Our children come into us every single day, and we're really looking at some basic things that we need to do for them. We want strong reading instruction. We want children to learn how to read and use reading to learn both at the same time, starting at the age of four or five. We want math, math being taught as a language at the youngest ages. Our program lends itself to that. I always say to our youngest learners, math is a language, just like English, just like Chinese. Math is a language. It's the number, the base ten number system. And we want our children to develop that language starting at the very youngest ages. We also want them to understand that with math, it's about thinking deeply. That begins, that comprehension begins in our classrooms, in kindergarten first and second grade. But probably most important, then beyond all of that, is the daily routines and practices that help our children be organized in their thinking, in their functioning, and in their planning. So, you will come to Coleman Hill today, and you will see our youngest learners opening and closing doors on their own, pulling on their backpacks, walking out of the building. They know their jobs, and that's a big part of our deliberate programming, K-12, to get them ready because if we don't do those soft skills well, the struggles that will come their way will be real. They struggle today, opening and closing doors. We help them, but we guide them with a gentle hand. And those who are doing it independently, I would say it's about 95% of our building right now, opening and closing doors, getting out of the car in the morning, getting off the bus. It's an incredible thing to watch. But lastly, and the most important thing that we want from our youngest learners of the whole child is really the soft skills of learning how to be responsible, how to be independent, how to feel happiness, how to feel confident, how to be vulnerable, and how to experience all of that in this constructive learning environment that we call their classroom, so that they can be available to all the skills that they need as they grow up. Now, I don't know if you want me to keep going, but I'm...
No, you don't.
Okay. In terms of some hard data, our children are, every child learns at a developmental stage that's appropriate to them. We treat every child as unique learners. So, currently, right now, we have 111 of our second graders reading on or above grade level, according to our standardized data. We have 77 of our first graders on or above grade level in math. We have 67 kindergartners on or above grade level in reading. That's tremendous growth from September because of the programs that we have in place. But the programs are only tools that our teachers use to educate the whole child. I've only been there six months. The journey back at Coleman Hill has just begun, and I hope in a year's time out from now, I have more wonderful news to share with you because it is probably the most special K-2 building in the country, in my mind. There's something very unique that happens at Coleman Hill. And that's because of our community. So, thank you.
Thanks, Peggy.
Mr. Mack.
Yes.
Welcome, your very first budget.
How'd you do, Mr. Mack?
Well, I have no idea. Thanks for a lot of support from over here around here. I hope this goes well.
Usually, when you hear your first two, you have to have at least a 10% down.
Just take Kim's budget for this. She has less students than you do.
In all seriousness, as Peggy said, thank you to everybody. It is my first year as a principal, and budget season, so do the board and the district office. That's an incredibly supportive bunch. So, thank you for everything you do for us. As I started to think about the budget here at Wampus, the one question that Ms. Palmer and I kind of really started to kick around was, how do we really make decisions that are best for students to continue to help them thrive at Wampus while being financially responsible, right? That's kind of what we came up with, simple, but that's kind of what we kept at the forefront of our work. I know last year Peggy shared some good data on some of the state assessments from the previous year, and I'm happy to report kind of more similar success. So, I'll give you a little data on that. In grade 3, 4, and 5 last year, we were again in the top 2% to 5% for Language Arts in Math for all, for both state tests. That's compared to over 695 schools in New York State, top 2% to 5%, which I think is incredible. The success that we have had over the last five years in some of those state exams, I think, has really allowed us to start to dive deeper into our curriculum. One specific thing this year, because of some of that success, which has really helped open up some of the schedules for our reading specialists, we had a lot of new faculty members of Wampus this year. And really, this success has allowed our specialists to push into classrooms every single day and work with our staff members on the curriculum that they're delivering, which really has been a great thing this year because we've had so many new teachers. And again, that's because of the success on the state test. I also think that we've done well on those recently. That drove the decision that we were gonna, the 4th and 5th grade is taking the computer-based test of the state exams this year. We weren't mandated to do it, but our grade levels got together and made that decision because we want our kids best prepared, right? 3rd grade still doing the pencil and paper, which I think is a very appropriate decision because this is the first time they'll ever take a state test. But we did the simulation this past week with 4th and 5th grade, and it was like an overwhelming success, so...
The kid said, "Easy."
I mean, some of these things, we're meeting with the grade levels in the next two days, but I'm going around to lunch asking students, you know, like, "Oh, those math tools, those were easy." And like, two months ago, I'm like, "Wait, what are we doing on the computer?" And they just rolled with it because the kids, the kids get it. So, it really was an overwhelming success, and those exams are coming up in April and May. Speaking a little bit about, I know Peggy had mentioned, you know, a lot of the programs we decided to use are based on child needs. So, I just wanted to kind of go through a few of the programs we're continuing to use next year. We're gonna continue to use the Wonders Program as our primary ELA program. In 3rd grade, we're using Foundations again, which is part of the Wilson Language Program for phonics, fluency vocabulary, all those things. Investigations will continue for mathematics. I know Kim's going to speak a little bit about some training our special ed and reading specialists did this year, which we're excited about. One thing Tim and I have been working on a bit with our 5th grade is the New York State Science exam is going to be in 5th grade starting next year. So, we've started to look at possible science programs to prepare our students for that. Continuing I Ready, our intramural program, which was introduced four years ago. We're continuing that, which is very exciting. And then, of course, true, true to my heart, the Character Strong Program with our school counselors continuing for next year. I know we're, Andy Schmidt, our counselor, and I are coming back to the board in February to talk more about that. And we're up and running with extra curriculums again this year, which is really exciting. And we added a new one this year. So, we're doing a 5th grade homework center, which is a nice place for 5th graders to go and work with a 5th grade teacher to get started on some homework. So, overall, our budget, budget increase, though it's not a 10% decrease, it's only a $6,000 increase. So, and it's really, we're increasing 4th grade sections next year. So, that's really based on the consumables we'll need for that, for that new group of kids. Last thing I really want to say is that I'm really very proud to be part of the Wampus community. Today was the 88th day of school. We had our first evening concert last week at Wampus. We went off with a good success. We needed to have a little more seating in the cafeteria we learned, but it was a great success. Today, we had encore recitals with our students in music. And the pride in the building, it really is palpable right now. And I think that's because the community and the parents are preparing their kids to come every day, and really the overall commitment that the faculty and staff had at Wampus. So, just want to say thank you, and I'm very proud to do it.
Dave, A+.
A+.
Really great.
But you have a 4th grade pass coming, right? You said you have an A+?
Yes, thank you.
Good job. I was supposed to hold that for later, but... Thanks, Dave.
6% decrease.
I said I'm a star.
Don't say anymore. Drop the mic, you're good.
Your hat has said the 6%.
Just like Peggy and Dave said, thank you very much for all your support, for letting us come here and talk tonight and share what we do with that financial support that you provide us. So, thank you. So, the budget at HCC is always developed to support both the academic and social-emotional growth of our students. I can tell you confidently that we're continuing to employ robust resources, such as digital courseware, NearPod, and Pardeck assessment tools, such as iReady, and hands-on supplies for our students in the classroom. They've been very helpful. iReady has been a great tool for us to sometimes take a look at something beyond or aligned to the state test, just to give us different dimensions and seeing how our kids are doing. I want to talk to you, because it's so exciting, what you provide to our students, especially for their social-emotional and academic growth when it comes to our SDL program. I know last year we talked about SDL. That is the time, it's now 40 minutes after lunch for 7th and 8th graders. Last year, it was a skeleton. We wanted to make sure that we had everything in place, and we knew it would run well when it comes to attendance and student choice because students can choose for some of the days what they're going to learn about during the school day. And so, I wanted to share with you some of the work that we did this year and for next year. So, those robust programs that I was talking about. Well, when you look at STEAM, we now have students being able to continue their work in Science Olympia during that time. We have 3D printing. We have really focused on screen-free ways to learn more about technology and explore technology, such as, they call it the 3-Doodler. It's where if you walk by the library, Barbara has students with a pen. So, it's not a machine or printer, a 3D printer. It's a pen that students use to, it's a little more artistic, to create 3D structures. Barbara and some other teachers also use Cublets. That's where they create robots. They, the components and sensors are still there. It's through discovery and trial and error that they're doing this, instead of coding. So, again, it's a way to get them off the screens, but really still engage in technology. We also have extensive materials for students to work in, such as Buddha boards and paint stickers, where they are painting with water. It's contemplative, but they're social, and they're with their kids, their friends doing it. So, it's a nice way to practice a way of mindfulness in a relaxed setting. Again, they can choose to do this. We also took a look at our humanities, and we brought in something called, it's called Five Minute Fridays. It happens once a month. And it is a video that a student created, and it came from some feedback I'd gotten that sometimes parents don't know what's happening in the middle school. And we do send out a lot of communication, but the truth is, I think when kids get to middle school, a lot of times, they're busy doing their own thing, and they know that independence. So, we asked Bobcat TV to team up with us, and Gavin Pedrona really worked with us. And so, she has a group of kids that she works with at SDL, I think, twice a week. And they create, they ask what my wish list is. And I tell them some ideas, and then they take one of them, and they plan, and they go interview teachers, and they develop a script. And then, they develop a Five Minute Friday that we send out once a month that says something that's exciting that's going on at HCC. So, that is through, again, through the SDL. We have really, we brought back our work with interdisciplinary projects. A few years ago, our teachers went to High Tech High. They started to develop these great projects, and then COVID hit. So, this year, Dawn Salinas and Andrew Bedowich, the Technology and the Science Connection, have brought one of those units back, and they brought it to SDL. And they have about 25 students now that are two cohorts that are working on evolution. And they can choose what type of evolution and technology that they want to look at. And they look at, someone's looking at air travel. And so, and it connects to science eventually with trees. And I could go into more detail, but I don't want to take too much time. But it's an exciting connection that's come back from work they did. And they're doing it through SDLs. They also have been taking a field trip to the Science Museum. That would, that makes it exciting for the kids as well. We still support skills. We have an executive functioning class, an organizational skills class. Sales still involved, time for them. And then, of course, there's always the extra help and the academic support for our students. So, that's all made possible from the support that you all provide us through the budget. Just two other areas that I wanted to highlight. We're continuing to strengthen our community and empower our kids. We're bringing in voices beyond the walls of HCC. Trent Hall has returned, and he'll return in the future to work on voice circles, strengthen the community, really talking about honor, dignity, and belonging. The JCK Foundation has come back to us, and they'll come back each year thanks to this financial support. And that's to make sure our kids are better aware of mental health. We have written out loud, that was a BHEF, huge hit, that now has been, the district took it on, and our 8th graders have, they're in the middle of it now. It's a magical time where they're creating stories and collaborating. And then, we have hashtag kindness and a Power One speaker that comes every year, all to bring that to our students. And nothing is in isolation. So, when a speaker comes, we build on it. It's not, there's a speaker, "Nice to see you, and talk to you later." It is, okay, so what are we gonna do with Power One? How are we gonna build this? Same with kindness. So, it's all transformational. And we're also redesigning our workspaces. You saw the courtyard that we, in collaboration with the BHEF, put together. We're now thinking of something called the abode. There's a space between the two art rooms that with some work, it can be a place where we can have students have an opportunity to meet and work together, make connections socially, that sometimes it might be harder for them to make those connections. So, that's another way that we're gonna help transform space along with our classrooms. And we'll continue to do the professional development with High Tech High. We actually have a team of teachers there now doing that great work. Mathematics, we work with Metamorphos. And we have GNR, Dave mentioned that I was gonna talk about it, just that they're doing...
Oh, that, Kim. I was gonna say. What you said, how did he know? I hope, I'm not gonna talk that much about it.
Our students are in great hands, thanks to you. So, they're happy, they're healthy, they're engaged, and they're in a relationship, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Great, Kim.
Thank you, Kim. You are giving me 31 students, so...
How many students?
We are, we're getting a net increase of 31 students in the high school from where we were. So, I'll start with that. It's gonna translate to an increase of $7,831 for the high school budget. But this is my seventh year going through it. It's hard to believe. And every year, I sort of learn something different about the process. What I always do, though, is I start with the mission. And I wanted to thank all of you for looking into it last year and revising it to add that leadership component. And so much of the budget at the high school reflects that added leadership component for us. And so many of the programs that we've been looking at this year, we've been trying to highlight the ways in which we do go about and explicitly develop our leaders. So, for us at the high school, it's very departmental when we, when we get the budget together. So, we go out to all the chairs, we look at the directors, and we really try to see where we need to go in terms of developing our students and get them closer to achieving our mission. I think at the high school, we're always so aware of it because we know as soon as they walk across that stage and they grab their diploma, that that is really the last time that we have an ability to impact them in terms of the mission. So, we start with that, and then we work backwards from there. So, looking at that last little piece, making sure that we have productive and responsible citizens and leaders of the 21st century, and then looking at our programs and all of the things that the budget goes towards to make sure that we're getting them there. One of the things that Chris Bisari, my predecessor, taught to me was, you really want to go into every budget and make sure that the 9th graders have every opportunity afforded to them afforded to them that the graduating seniors will do. And you hear Jen speak about that all the time. And it's really something that we think about and we make sure that we are trying to give them everything. And I think that speaks to all of the courses that we've been willing to add over the course of time. So I think at last count, we had about 18 new courses over the course of seven years. And those changes in courses reflected not only our need to get closer to supporting our mission, but just things that were going on in society, feedback that we heard from alumni, what they needed when they got to college. So all of those things go into it, it's very collaborative with our chairs and directors. We have our flexible support program, which has been something that we continue to focus on improving throughout so that we can support all of our learns, even those that are having school avoidance issues. We now have two sections of our language and communications class, where we started with one and now it's really central to sort of the community of our school. Now we have two of those sections. Our science research program just received some great news today. And then we have. Congratulations to Samantha Melowitz, who is going on to be a finalist. So congratulations to the entire program and all of our faculty and staff going back to Comen Hill because we know that it's that instilling that love of learning that really gets these kids to where they, they need to go. Our global scholars program again is thriving in its, I believe it's fifth year, fifth year, I think. And we're seeing that expand in many ways. We're seeing our students in that program enter into these outside organizations, contests, and different, you know, different events and really being awarded on a national and international level. Our startup program this year, phenomenal in that we have mentors from the community coming in and working directly with our students. So all oversaw by our teachers in our social studies program, in our social studies department, but also in our math department as well. So interconnecting these different departments is something that we see more and more happening. We know our robotics program continues to attract students from all different content areas and we're seeing them go and enter into contests throughout. And again, we're at the point now where we have not only robotics one, but two, but robot masters. Our leadership programs continue to develop our students in the ways that you have sort of identified as being important to our mission. So we have our mentor program, our peer leader, chemistry, and our computer science TA programs. One of the most interesting things that we're doing as a faculty this year is unpacking all of our curriculum and all of our courses to see in those areas where we are explicitly teaching those leadership skills. Because now it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we are instilling that in our kids since it is part of our mission. Again, we have 24 advanced placement courses as well, which, you know, continue to sort of challenge our students where we need to challenge them. And then that's in all different content areas, from our, our fine arts department all the way through our science, which was the latest advanced placement course that we, that we had, which is our environmental science course. So again, we could not do any of this without the support that you've given us. We are sort of back up and running and as Scott alluded to, the high school is a place that's alive from 6:30 in the morning to 9:30, 10:00 at night. And again, it really is the budget that allows us to do that and we really appreciate the flexibility for allowing that to happen. We do have one new budget line this year and that is our startup budget line and that is connected directly to our startup program. So that's the only new budget line that you'll see from the high school. And again, thank you as, as always for your support.
Well, thank you all so much. You know, it's, it's so wonderful to hear you thanking us. We want to thank the four of you so much and, and we know how hard you all work and we appreciate, you know, what you, you know, your reflections on what programming is needed and, and looking at the different frameworks. And it's, it's impressive to know that you're all looking at the balance of academic, you know, rigor and, and, but also the social emotional learning and how we balance that and, and what you do for our children. And we, you know, we can't thank you all enough and everybody feels, anyone have any questions or comments?
No, I just think that not every principal in every school district in the United States thinks about, I'm going to spend extra time creating student-directed learning and worrying about kids and finding them, their interest in groups that they could feel a part of and grow and continuing to grow a curriculum. You know, we're, we're a small high school and high schools two, three times our size. I'm not sure if they have as many options for our kids. You didn't even get into extracurriculars and athletics, right?
Or field trips.
Or field trips, right? Yeah, we're still even going to the opera.
Yeah.
Right. So I know that that, that extra time comes from your dedication to these kids and to your profession and I want to thank you because you are, you are leaders to your peers in other districts in this regard. And it's not work that as a principal, anybody told you you had to do. It's work that you created for a better situation for our kids, so thank you.
Kelly did give us deadlines though.
Yes, she did.
Kim gets a gold star.
Yes.
A platinum. You're all wonderful. Thank you so much.
We want you to stay, but we want you to go.
Go home.
Yes. You have 11 hours.
Yeah, we'll take a, take a minute, two minute break, everybody. Watch this, let me. Hi, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Thank you all so much and, okay, masking for wearables. Comments?
Nine point four.
Nine point four. Are there any comments in the public regarding the budget? Thank you. Okay, hearing none. And we're going to go over to Cory, who's going to give us the budget schedule and timeline.
So for the 2023-2024 budget development process, tonight is our first budget hearing one. March 7th is our administration's proposed budget. March 21st is budget hearing two, where we'll discuss programs for students of special needs, computer-assisted instruction, art and music instruction, curriculum development. March 18th will be budget hearing three, where we'll cover interscholastic athletics, operations and maintenance, transportation services, and revenue. April 11th will be budget hearing four, the final proposed budget. April 18th will be the budget adoption. May 2nd will be budget hearing five, where we review proposed budget. And May 16th is budget vote at HC Crediteon Middle School from 6:30 to 9:00 PM.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Okay. Moving on to item number 10, unfinished business. It's a policy, review of policies. I think we're going to hold off on that and jump ahead to 11.2 international travel. Okay, we'll do that. Oh, oh, we're going to, I'm so sorry.
Sorry. Go ahead, Kelly.
All right, Kelly, go ahead.
Kelly's been working.
With that introduction.
Where is Kelly's super talking about her budget? Sorry, Kelly.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Kidding aside. A great introduction, thank you. In developing the budget, the budget guidelines for a fiscal and sound, substantial budget, we take into account the board goals, enrollment projections, our staffing needs, as well as analysis of expenditures and various factors that we consider. If I have your fiscal plan, we use the historical information and we use reasonable assumptions to develop that, you know, again, enrollment projections and debt service changes or increases, salary and benefits and the consumer price of this. Here's a look at our, our enrollment projections all the way to 27, 28, based on the long-range planning study. We're currently at 2301, I think we're around 2304, 2305. So they're projecting an increase to 2349 for, for next year, you know, about 49, 48 students. And then kind of a leveling increase for the next four to five years, keeping in mind that. Say that every year.
Right.
And that's true. Here's a breakdown by building. As you can see, the majority of the buildings are seeing an increase, with the exception of HCC, which is having a decrease from 533 to 500, oops, sorry. The rest of the buildings are having an increase, high school again having a large increase as well. Here's a look at our debt service. In the 2021 school year, we did refinance our bonds. Thank God we did it then, not now. We wouldn't have seen the savings that we received, have received about $308,000 over these last, going forward until it's 25, 26. So the 26, 27 budget, we won't have any debt service remaining on the books. And we did have a debt payment, a final debt payment in 1920 and expired in 1925. So again, 26, 27, our debt service is finally paid off.
Keeping in mind, that's a bond from how many years ago?
Eighteen, older bond. Jen's slide. This is a, let me just explain this slide on the left side here is the percentage of the budget in terms of expenses, the right side total dollar amounts. The red is salary, the blue is benefits in terms of percentages. This is a, this is the budget projections, I'm sorry, these are actuals from, going from left to right. The green is the current budget and right is a projection going forward based on our assumptions with the five-year fiscal plan analysis.
Although it doesn't mean that that's what it's going to be.
Yeah, my next point, next point. Doesn't mean that's what the budget is going to be. This is just an analysis based on the assumptions, just to give us an idea of what we potentially could be in the future. So again, it's not going to be the budget we're presenting for next year or the year after, just an idea, a benchmark to look at. If you want to be around that 75% range in terms of salary and benefits together, we're slightly above that, keeping in mind that, you know, that debt service will come off, it's going to be a higher percentage, that's why you're going to be over that 75%. But with benefits increasing, salaries increasing, you're going to be a little bit above that 75% as we've been in the last couple of years. Fiscal trend, this is essentially the surplus you have at the end of the year. As you can see, last year, we were pretty tight, less than 1% remaining in our total budget. You want to be around 2% at the end of each year. In the past, we've had that. Again, last year, we were at 0.71%, kind of a surplus at the end of the year. I anticipate that for this year as well, hopefully more than 1%. But it could be that this year and going forward. It's something we'll, we'll talk about with finance advisory going forward and just go from there. The true tax rate, this was an Iowa slide, Iowa favorite. Unfortunately, our school districts have stopped providing information on this.
I know, it's almost useless.
I think I know why. So, you know, for us, it's excellent every year because we're in that, that, that good mark of, of true tax value. True tax value is essentially you take your house, it's a way to compare every district. You take your house and put it in another district, you could, it's an easy way to compare your taxes, the value of your taxes to each area. So we're always in a good, towards the end, towards the bottom, which is a good thing. But again, this year, 33, 21 school districts didn't report data, so it's becoming a little less valuable.
Might be the last year of the slide.
Yep, likely.
That's how our school, Jen, reports that most half.
Yeah, so, so I think maybe some of the data is not as, as good, so they're not reporting, but just aside. Okay, fun part, property tax cap and the calculation. So the tax levy formula began in 2023, no, sorry, 2012, 2013, was made permanent, it's a law in 2018. So it's a, it's a long formula based on various factors that, that can set the maximum amount you can tax your, your community. This is the actual calculation from the controller. I'll explain that in a little simpler terms, hopefully going forward. So I want us to speak the same language, you're going to hear a lot of information where you see a tax levy limit, maximum allowable tax levy, proposed tax levy, and those are three different things. And I'll explain those. The tax levy limit is essentially the long list of, of factors that get in the formula. You get to a tax levy limit and that's before exclusions, so I'll explain exclusions going forward. Important one is the maximum allowable tax levy. That's the max amount you can tax your local taxpayers based on the formula. And then there's proposed tax levy. You don't have to go to the maximum allowable tax levy, you can propose a tax levy that's below that, that's the proposed tax, okay? As we've done every year. So the first step in the formula is you take your, your prior year tax levy, for us it's 86044712, multiply that by the tax base growth factor. In simplest form, what a tax base growth factor is, if you've had additional properties in your, in your town, new construction, you've had, it could go either way too, additions or subtractions, you know, takes it out. We've always been around half a percent, 1%. You see in 2021, it was almost 2%. That was just a factor of Swiss Re had a pilot agreement that came off, a pilot, pilot expired, they came back on a tax rule. So we had a large appearance of a large increase in the growth factor that year, 2%. But we've been at about the half percent in the last two years. And again, this year it's at 0.55%. So that's that first step, you take your tax levy, multiply it by that percentage. The second part is your pilots. You add in your pilots for your current year, you subtract the, the projected pilots for the next year. So our current pilots right now, we have IBM Engel Berman is about $2.4 million. The IBM pilot is set to expire after this year. It may expire and it may not be, may be renewed or it may not. So I've done this presentation based on the pilot expiring and an estimate of, of what the pilot could be if it was to be renewed. So that's why you see one side, two sides in this calculation, I wanted to have all the information. So here's a look at, at the calculation based on the pilots, look, it's right down here. Pilot, not having the IBM pilot, we just have Engel Berman, it's 568,000. Or we get the IBM, a new IBM pilot and it's $2.3 million. So you can see the taxable levy limit, a big difference between the two. And I'll explain that. So I'm just, I'm going to keep on going with, with the assumption that the pilot is not in play at this point. So the next step in that formula, after you add back the pilots, is you subtract the exemptions. So exemptions are, it's your, your debt service, your capital improvement plan, and your vehicles minus any state aid that you're going to receive. So for us, last year was about $4.3 million, excuse me. We got about $94 million in state aid, so our total exemption was 4.2, almost $4.3 million for this year, 22, 23. There's another exemption you can have, we haven't had in at least six years, seven years, based on the retirement system. The teacher's retirement or the employee's retirement system goes up more than two percentage points. That difference between two percentage points and over two percentage points can be added back into your levy. We haven't had this in five, six years and it hasn't, it won't happen likely anytime soon, so that's why you don't see any information down here. But here's the TRS rate, 9.53, last year, 9.8. This current year, again, that's an increase, it's not over 2%, it can't be included as an exclusion. Okay, what you hear, the 2% tax gap, that's kind of the only thing you've heard about this. But that, this is where it comes into play, it's based on basically CPI. If you look for these last years from 16 to today, it's been all over this. It's been 0.12 when the tax levy was in the beginning of the stages and it's been really close to 2 going forward. The last two years, CPI has been 4.7 and 8%. But the maximum you can use is 2%. Okay? So like I said, this year, CPI is 8%. But along with this formula, the max you can use is 2%. So when you multiply that 2%, that gets us to this 86.86,386,701 number here. So again, it's a long kind of capitalated formula, I'm just trying to give a quick synopsis of it. And then finally, to get to that tax levy limit for exclusions, you subtract your pilots. Okay, so in this projection, I'm projecting not having a new IBM pilot, so we just have the Engel Berman at 568,000. Or if there is a new IBM pilot, estimated amount, that would be, that'd be $2.3 million. So you have a tax levy limit for exclusions of either $85.8 million or $84 million. The last step in the formula, this fun formula, is adding back your exemptions for next year. So when you do your budget, there is some exemptions that you're allowed to carry over into that tax levy formula, so go into the tax levy. Again, those include debt service, vehicles, any capital improvements you're going to make projected, minus any state aid you're going to receive based on that. So we're checking about $3.6 million in debt service and capital projects, minus the projected state aid of about $61,000. Again, we don't get a lot of state aid based on our projects. So I estimate exemptions for next year would be $3.6 million. Now, this number may change a little bit, the state, the governor hasn't put his budget out, her budget out yet, so once I get that numbers, those numbers, this number will change a little bit, but it should be close. So if we have a pilot, if the pilot expires, our maximum allowable tax levy will be $89.4 million. If there is another IBM pilot, it'll be $87.6 million. So having said that, again, if the pilot expires, we have a maximum of $89.6 million, that's a maximum allowable percentage of 3.9%. So that's the maximum allow we go out to taxpayers and propose as a tax levy. If there is a new pilot, if you know with IBM, likely the total will be $87.6 million or a maximum allow of 1.88%. Okay, so it's either an increase of potentially $3.3 million or $1.6 million. So we're kind of still in that, that phase right now where we don't know where it's going to land in terms of the pilot. So we do have some time to make some decisions on the, on the, on the tax levy. Our presentation is at the end of March, where we discuss tax levy and review with the finance advisory committee, talk about the implications of that pilot and how it could reduce or increase our taxes and have to evaluate user reserves. And then we'll, we'll come to you guys and just give recommendations and provide as much detail as we can. So long-winded presentation, there's, at this point, it's kind of early in the tax levy development, but once we know this information, with further information, we'll be able to talk a little bit more. But again, it could be a maximum of 3.93 or 1.88%.
And Kelly, just to make sure I understand you correctly and then anybody that's listening understands it. So if you're a household, we're far away from knowing what the tax levy is, just as a caveat, far, far away, but if you're a household, just in this example, and assuming like it went up to the, to the, to the cap, to as high as you can go, which again, we're not, we're not saying that's what's going to happen, but just as, as an example, it's not that the household would be paying 3.9% or 1.88% because if a company rolls off of a pilot, then they're in the, then they're in that pool of taxpayers that are paying the levy. So it's a little bit more complicated than saying from one household's perspective, it's going to either be 3.9, 1.88.
Absolutely.
And the maximum allowable levy doesn't necessarily mean what our budget is, how that's going to be affected by our budget.
And the other thing which I'm sure we'll talk more about when we get into revenue, but this is a very, this is, this is going to be a very different year than most years in that we have many neighbors who are going to not only be getting a step up in, in foundation aid from the state, but the way I understand it is the foundation aid is indexed to the market inflation rate. I don't know if it's technically CPI or it's CPI-like. So they could see not only a stepped up increase in the foundation aid, but also at that increase of call it 8% or whatever the underlying inflation rate was, we're not getting any of that.
Right.
So we're, we're in just a very different financial position.
Absolutely, yeah. So we'll know a little more about that when the governor puts out her budget, but yeah, that's an excellent point, a lot of districts are getting a larger non-foundation aid, made, made up from previous years and unfortunately, we're not doing that. Speaking of that, the, the maximum allowable tax levy, we've never proposed one over the maximum allowable tax levy, over these, since 2012, 13, the start of the formula, we've always been below the maximum level. And that's, that's a total of about $4.5 million that we could have taxed or we were allowed to tax, which we did not, which is something to be proud of. And then again, with your budget, our next meeting is until March 7th, we'll do the administrative proposed budget and then our following budget hearings, two and three, budget hearing four on April 11th, adoption on April 18th, and then our final budget hearing on May 2nd. And again, the vote again Tuesday, March, May 16th from 6:30 to 9:00 PM at HCC. This presentation will be on the website for tomorrow and if you have any questions, please feel free to email me at your address.
Thank you so much, Kelly. Thank you for all the work with the, anyone else have any questions? Okay. Move on to the 10.1, review of policies. You want to read that and go to? Oh, yes, sorry, we said that. Yeah, 11, we did say that, sorry, I got thrown off again. 11.2 international travel, sorry, Tim. We'll go to international travel and we're going to hear from Melissa, yeah, thank you.
Jen, did you want to say anything to start it?
Yes. So I have not been a proponent of international travel. I have gone over to the Melissa side, which is the light side. You know, while I was a student who in high school did have an opportunity to study abroad in high school in Japan, which is like rather unheard of, and I value that so much, that international travel. There was always that lingering fear that, you know, we are liable, should something go wrong, it's a big responsibility to do something like this, what would that undertaking take? And mostly, my fear was doing it during the school year. Because we have vacations that get canceled, we have the, somebody has COVID who's away on a trip, somebody has to stay, like there are so many confounding variables to doing that successfully act during the school year. Melissa has been talking to me about trips. We know that many of the teachers, particularly in your department, have been doing trips with an outside agency with, with much success. I have been watching this agency for the past couple of years, particularly when COVID first hit, to see what they were doing and how they managed. We did come to an agency that we think does a really spectacular job. We've had conversations with our. think does a really spectacular job. We've had conversations with our attorneys about liabilities to the school and how the school can be held harmless, but at the same token, be affiliated with this opportunity for kids. So now, we do have opportunities that we, Melissa is undertaking all of this work herself with Chris's support, and has been looking into these trips and talking about structures that could occur to support kids in a way that's a Byram Hills way. So not just collecting paperwork and sending kids off with a stranger, but making sure that we have teachers who are on that trip, who are the counselors, for lack of a better word, advisors, and on the trip. I don't know what their terminology is.
Chaperones.
Chaperones. Yeah, it's even more than that, right? It's like facilitating.
Faculty advisors.
Faculty advisors, facilitators. And then also the need from a Byram Hills perspective of having an administrator present on those trips. So we have looked at some incredible options. And I know that Melissa has been a part of taking teachers on really amazing international trips as part of leadership building, et cetera. And she is here to talk with Tim about this. And the two of them are going to bring the great experiences I had when I was a kid to Byram Hills kids, but over the summer, right? When we don't have to worry about now they're missing this or that, or, you know, it's snowing, you know, there's like all of these things that we have to worry about with things like that.
And I can vouch that Jen has been adamantly against international trips. Because we've been trying to talk to her about it since she became superintendent. When Global Scholars was launched, we thought this would be great for little scholars. And we had a meeting with Jen and she said, no.
And then at some point, somebody said, and even the middle school kids, and I said, they can't even make their own sandwiches. They're not going on international trips.
Listen, I looked at each other and said, maybe later. Let's give her some time to get comfortable. So.
And now this is something I not only am very comfortable with, but I also am very excited about. Because our kids need that experience.
And all joking aside, we're very cautious.
Yeah.
So I know, and you know, Jen, she is extremely cautious, and we all are, about the safety of our children. So we'll address those concerns this evening. So what we want to talk about are basically these four items. Why do international trips? Jen, hit on some of the themes. What are some of the opportunities that this organization offers? And then what are some of the logistics of international travel? And then some frequently asked questions. We put out an initial interest survey. And parents asked a lot of good questions. So we'll go over some of those. And it'll be the start of, I'm sure, a long list of questions that will come up, that we will continue to maintain. So I'll first address the why international trips. Chris probably mentioned three times the mission statement in his opening presentation, which he does often, which I appreciate. And we do believe that international travel does support our mission is to provide students with the knowledge and skills and means to become productive and responsible citizens and leaders of the 21st century. So we do believe this will help students learn to be independent. It will give them a big perspective of the world, broaden their perspective by engaging in international travel. We have had a focus on authentic learning and authentic learning experiences for many years. Kim talked about High Tech High. That has to do with giving kids authentic opportunities to demonstrate their learning. We believe that this also supports that as well, engaging kids in a global environment, which is part of our Global Scholars program, as well as our historical thinking and social studies focus. We want to expand our students' experiences and perspectives and provide some learning opportunities outside of the classroom. We think that is really exciting for our students as Global Scholars and started allowing those opportunities. This is just another reason to do that. So that is some of the why behind it. So we want to talk about what are those opportunities through this organization? And Melissa, you want me to...
I'm the one. Yeah.
Okay. So Melissa will walk us through it. She's looking at me like, no, you do that.
I've been dying for this moment for 25 years. So here it comes. It's going to come out fast and with passion. I started badgering Bill Donahue for an international trip. So when Jen came to me and said, I spoke to EF, and how do you think about this? I almost fell out of my chair. So I'm really excited to be here to talk about this and to get you thinking forward about what this could do for our kids. Like Jen, I was an exchange student. After graduating, instead of going to college, I went to Argentina to live for a year, except I had studied German for six years. So I literally got off the plane, not even being able to say hola. And now I've been the world language chairperson here at Byram Hills because it changed my experience so much. So I know we've all taken our kids on travel to great places. It's a different experience when they're alone and they're independent and they have to make decisions by themselves. And they get to see the world through their own eyes and make those decisions about, am I going to be a leader? How am I going to be a productive member of society? So that's why I'm really a proponent for this. And that language piece as well. So in talking about EF, I want to give a little bit of a history about EF. It is a family-owned company. I feel like I could be a spokesperson for them. I've been on a couple of their trips. And this is why I'm passionate and I'm confident in sharing them with you. Family-owned business. They've been in business for 57 years. They're in all of the countries. I've been on a service trip for educators with them. I've gone to the Galapagos Islands, traveling on little boats, puddle jumpers and boats with groups of students. And then my own children have actually done trips in their home district. My daughter's going in April, and my son did a trip as well. So I have this experience all with EF. I can vouch for their safety. I can vouch for their organization. I can vouch for their itineraries. And that's why I'm comfortable presenting this. So four different categories that EF offers out of the 80-plus trips that they have, and they do have customizable trips as well. But looking at the STEM tours, I just took a sampling of what they offer. So they've got experiences in Japan, Switzerland, and Great Britain, where kids will have experiential learning, working hand in hand with experts in the field in these innovative situations. So in Japan, for example, they would be working with robotic arms. They'd be looking at the high-speed trains that they have in that, you know, it's severely advanced technological city that they've got. Moving down to the Leadership Conference, this is something that I was really excited about for Global Scholars, because they offer this once a year, and they change the venue based on the city. They're working in Berlin for the next two years. They're doing Sustainable Future this summer. Next summer is going to be Water, working on Water and Alba Impact. And the Leadership Conference is really interesting because it brings 1,000 international students together, divides them up into teams, into a design thinking challenge. They have to create their solution, solve their problem, pitch it to a panel of judges. And then the winning team actually gets their solution posted in the Nobel Peace Prize museum that's in Stockholm. So that's exciting for those kids.
I can just remind the board, design thinking is integrated into our Global Scholars program. And you've shared a lot of examples around design thinking that helped us fill our master schedule at high school. Chris engaged our Global Scholar students in that process. So that fits right. That's why we're very excited about that piece of it.
They offer service tours as well. I did a service tour to the DR for educators that EF offered back in 2016. When I was in the DR, we did three different service opportunities. One in the mountains, where we partnered with the community for beautification and sustainability within the recycling realm. We went out to the coast to work with the community partnering with the young children who needed English instruction in order to improve their educational access. And then we went to outside of Puerto Plata, where we worked with like a YNCA type of after-school experience for young girls who often might have gone down into the lane of the not-so-favorable service industry. And how do we train them with skills of sewing and cooking so that they could be in the hospitality industry and have an employment for the rest of their lives? So we did those three types of experiences. Jen's not a big fan of the service tours at this point right now because they are in some areas that are a little bit more riskier at this point. So it's something we're going to look into. Additionally, for service tours, I have great experience with Amigos International, which brings in more of a leadership aspect than I saw with EF. So it's something that's out there that we're still investigating. The Language and Culture Tours, that's the quintessential historical tour of Old Europe, but partnered with a cultural immersion and how do kids get to use their language in an authentic audience, is what we could say. My son did the Bell Italian. My daughter's doing the Bell Italian. They'll go through every single aspect of Italy. They'll be able to have meal taking. They'll be able to exchange with vendors. They'll be doing all of that while learning the history and seeing the history of the Colosseum in front of them. They'll be talking to, you know, where the Romeo, the Juliet's balcony and all of those other fun things that they talk about in school that they'll actually see in person. So moving on to the next slide, what our pilot plan is, is based on that survey that we did send out to parents, we put some options. What would you most be interested in for your student? The STEM tour in Japan definitely came back. The Leadership Tour came back, and the Language and Culture Tour came back. Options for the, more questions like, what does that look like for an itinerary of the European tour? There's so many to choose from. I would partial, I'm partial to Spanish, Italian, and French. Do we do something with those three countries so that our kids could actually use their language? The issue with the Leadership is that that's a two-year planning period. So right now, 2024 is already booked. You have to book it a little sooner in order to get space for your students there. And if we were to, I want to go to the next slide because it actually talks about our timeline. If you were to plan something for the summer, June, end of June, July for 2024, planning begins 18 months prior. So that's basically this February. You start with an informational session for parents and students. The informational session leads right into the enrollment session. Enrollment continues. So people can enroll however long they want, up until 110 days prior to departure. And that's simply because logistically, they cannot get an additional plane ticket for a group. Like, if Kim wanted to come, it's no, the group's already been purchased. We can't get an additional. The rooms already, you know, hotel rooms, everything has been booked. So that's why they close it at 110 days before. Along the line, EF actually manages all of the informational sessions. They give you the slideshow. They give you all the information. They're willing to participate in those meetings so that parents and students are informed of what do they need for passports? What do they need for visas? What do you need for any of your medical agreements or anything like that? How do you get your payments online? What do you need to bring? How do you have to be prepared for these trips? Up until the final departure meeting that talks about logistics of how are you getting to the airport? How are we getting picked up, you know, here in this state or in New York before we leave? You can't talk about a timeline without talking about logistics. So the next plan of the logistics is, how does this all happen? EF manages everything from the, you know, the flights from, basically if you get your child, we have to get children to JFK. They take them from JFK, get them through customs, they get them on the plane, get them through customs on the other side. They have all-in-country transport organized. They have all of accommodations organized. They have all of the meal taking. Minus some, some tours don't have lunch, but they have breakfast and dinner organized. They have after, after-dinner facilitations of reflections they have organized. They have all of the sites, or if you're going to meetings, or if you're doing other types of excursions, all of that is organized. All that's done by EF. So basically, we just have to provide the students, and they take care of all of that. What we have to provide also are chaperones. For every six students that we supply, EF will actually not give us a chaperone, but pay for a chaperone to go. So every six students, we get to send a chaperone. We also, like Jen mentioned, we want to talk about having a tour coordinator, that's an administrator here from Byram Hills, on the trip as well, on the tour as well. And then EF gives us a tour director, which is an in-country expert of that country who speaks the language, has all the contacts for all the transportation, for all the hotels, for all the excursions, everything. They are the in-country local expert. Moving down to costs, tourist range, based on whether you're doing a service tour, which are the most inexpensive, up to the Global Summit, the Leadership Summit is $7,000. And that's, it varies. That doesn't include passport fees or visa fees. It doesn't include, you know, that getting your child to JFK. Some tours, you know, I know the Bell, I'm talking about the Bell Italian because that's where my daughter's going, doesn't include lunch for her. She's got to get lunch on her own. And any incidentals that students want to buy or do or things like that.
Just a great, what is the ticket on the Bell Italian?
Oh, the Bell Italian, I think she's going for nine days and it's $3,800. And they are going everywhere. They do not have an in-country, they're not flying in-country, they're busing through everything. But it's the northern part of Italy that they're doing.
Wait, how long are these trips?
So you can choose. You can do seven to 10 days. So the Leadership Conference, you can do, it's like, I think of the Grand Circle Tours that my parents do. You could do a pre-trip, you could do a post-trip, and you can make it like, we want to do this. So there is not an area in Europe that you can't tack on pre or post the summit. The summit's only three days. So you could do a seven-day tour before and then do the summit, or you could go to the summit and then do a seven-day tour after, or you could do, you can just make it however long that you want. They're very, I don't want to say negotiable, they're very flexible with what they can do based on the time that you give.
For us, I think we're looking for a week to 10 days.
I think a week to 10 days. The only thing that might make it, I think a week in country is important, and sometimes you need those extra days for travel. You know, if you're traveling to Europe, you've got the time change, you're flying overnight, and you need to make adjustments for that.
So if somebody, this is going to be, I guess, a group trip.
Correct.
So if somebody tacked on, let's say, a bunch of days afterwards in somewhere else in the Netherlands, would they then go without a chaperone?
No, it has to be a group decision. So we would propose, this is the whole, we're proposing, this is what the pre-trip is going to be. Here's the summit, and then that's what it is. Take it or leave it. We're all going together.
With, let's say, 18 kids, would it be three shepherds from Byram Hills?
Yes. We are proposing that actually, this is one of the things we're going to talk about, that they are faculty and or staff members at this time. For the first pilot year, we wanted to be faculty members that are going.
But then the payments are paid from the families like directly into EF?
Payments go straight to EF. Yes. We do not exchange money with them at all.
Is there a sense of minimum or maximum amount of students for one specific program?
So some of the, depending on the tour, because if you go to a super remote location, you're not going to put, bring 120 kids to a super remote location. EF says they can accommodate anything. But I can tell you, like, we went to the Galapagos, we were in boats of 20 people going island to island. So to bring 100 people there, it would have been challenging. In that case, we spoke, I spoke to the leader of EF, and she said, if you had 120 people who wanted to go to a remote location, you run two concurrent trips then. You know, so you start one for two weeks, and then you do another one for two weeks, just to split it up to not overpopulate the area that you're going to.
And if we only had six, we would join some other school.
And if you only had six, then you send a chaperone, and then you send the tour leader to that.
Okay.
Yep.
But do you have an ideal sense of what that cap might look like or really depends on the trip?
It depends on the trip. I can tell you, trips that have gone from, you know, teachers that have done here, they run anywhere from 14 to 40 students that they've done. If you do a quintessential Madrid, Rome, Paris trip, you could get away with doing 46 kids. Like, they are equipped to do that. They can move that many kids.
Would you think of doing different places each summer? Would that be the goal?
I think we would poll the community to see what they're interested in, you know? And if a trip didn't vibe with students, and we did surveys afterwards, that why didn't this work? We would have to go from that as well.
But it would be, it would be one trip per summer? Is that the idea?
It depends on interest. You know, it's all about the informational section and who's interested.
Okay. Ken, so my daughter's going on the Spain trip, and also through EF, also with two teachers. How is that different from this?
That is a non-sanctioned school trip. It is not affiliated at all with the school. The teacher's doing it. Anybody could run an EF trip. I could call up EF and say, hey, I have 20 of my friends that want to go on a trip, and they would do a trip for you. So with that trip, again, all of your money goes straight to EF. That's organized. And you're just trusting the leader to take your child to wherever they're going. And that's the trip I did with the Galapagos with a trip like that. And it was all faculty chaperones, and that's how they operate.
I have to say, EF's been great so far.
Yeah.
It's super organized.
They're very responsive.
So why does it have to be school sanctioned if it works perfectly fine without the school sanction? If people are signing up and people are going.
We want to give access to more students. So some parents are a little like, well, this isn't a school sanctioned trip. I don't know if I want you to go. Those trips are going during the school year. This one's going during the summer. We could start to make curricular connections with it. It would be just something, I think, that would bring all of our programs that we've talked about today a little bit more, and we could talk about it. We don't talk about the trips that aren't school sanctioned in our classes at all.
Which is, and numbers are, they're struggling a little bit.
They're struggling with numbers because we can't talk about it in school. So it's something that's not, it's not poppy. They don't talk about it. It's not talked about. So we want to be able to talk about these experiences.
So the kids are responsible for their own passports and keeping everything safe?
It depends on who's leading the trip. I know Mr. O who leads the trip. We call it the nuclear football, who's carrying the passports at all time and making sure that that doesn't get lost and they're protected and they're in the safe of the hotel and everything's, that's how he runs his trip. He's very methodical about everything. That's up to the person. That's why we think a tour coordinator is so important to have because it's up to a Byram Hills representative to do that. EF does not take care of that. Otherwise, the students would be in charge of their own passports. And they have been left on the airplane. Yes.
I mean, it just concerns me about identifying that for the rest of these young people's lives.
Yeah. Kids leave stuff. So it's like, okay, you got through customs, holding the passports. We'll give them to you when we get to customs.
It's like a mom's suitcase on your, yeah.
Go to your...
So what are next steps then?
So great. So next steps would be obviously talking to you. We have had some frequently asked questions. This came back in the survey that we sent out to current eighth, ninth, and 10th graders, because they potentially could be on the trip for the 2024 if we were to go forward with this. Parents were concerned about chaperoning. Parents were concerned about costs. We've reviewed that. What's the commitment? And when do you get to, when do you have to commit to it? Cancellation policy is huge. So there is some flexibility with cancellation. They do recommend the Global Travel Protection Plan. I know with my home district where my kids are, it was mandatory. It's a nominal fee. It's less than, I want to say it's between $50 and $80, and it guarantees you being able to and it guarantees you being able to cancel if there's a loss of job with a parent, and you can no longer afford this trip. Or if there's a sickness in the family that you don't want your child going, the Global Travel Plan protects that. There are other provisions for cancellation if you don't have this plan, where depending on how far out from the trip, you get a certain amount of money back, minus the registration fee. They also have the peace of mind plan, which is, for example, the Bell Italia, my daughter's going in April, there's a COVID outbreak in Italy, and the teacher's like, no way we're not going. He can take that entire group and go somewhere else during that week. And so they have that peace of mind with EF. So there are variations of cancellation policies. Safety measures is obviously another big concern that all parents have. And talking about safety, when we were, Tim and I were going through, it's like, safety, there's so many, oh my gosh, there's so many layers of safety. When we talk about it, and what I felt comfortable when we did the trips, and this is what your daughter will be doing, it's like, students are never unchaperoned, they're never without an adult, that's why that ratio was so important. They're never left with free time in a foreign country, because that's scary. You do the buddy system, you have curfew, you have lights out. Medical safety concerns are taken care of, and we have a question on the next, a response on the next slide. Two trips that I, well, one trip that I was on, we had a kid who hurt her foot, had to take her to the ER. We got into the ER, she was taken care of. The tour director, the in-country tour director was there in two seconds, talking to the doctors, had the mother on the phone, talking to the doctor. We were able to fix her foot, get her medication. The only thing that happened to her is that we had a hike planned for the next day. She couldn't go on the hike, obviously, because her foot was hurt. So an adult stayed back with her, went to town, they went to lunch, they did some shopping, they went to a museum, they did another alternate experience while the group went. The other group went hiking. She was okay, and it was fine. On the last trip that Mr. O did to Spain, they were coming back, and his child tested positive for COVID. And she had to stay there, she stayed with a chaperone. Mr. O took the rest of the group back, gave enough time for the parent to come over and stay for the remainder of the quarantine with the student. And they came back, and everybody was fine. So there are protocols in place. EF has a 24-hour, seven days a week incident response team in all of the different time zones, in case you need to call in the middle of the night. They have that, and they have protocols for all of that as well. They don't, if there's a war or some type of violent uprising, they will cancel the trip based on the travel safety that's out there. So I, we can continue talking about safety, you know? You want your kids to keep their pocketbooks in front of them, or their backpacks in front of them, all of that's covered, and they talk about that.
It's a lot more structured than like the summer teen tours that?
I don't have any experience with the summer teen tours, so I can't talk about those. I've been on these, and I remember when we were in the Galapagos, it was like, the biggest joke was every 30 minutes we had to apply sunscreen, because that, our tour guide was not letting us walk out of Ecuador with a sunburn, so.
But on cost, for, you know, we're a public school, what if a family wants their child to experience this? We can't afford it.
So that's something that we've considered.
Yeah, so we are looking at that type of option. We may go to the Byram Hills Education Foundation and ask for some funding for that type of piece. And we'll, there could be opportunities for fundraising, we could do some fundraising events.
School sanction should be available.
So my child?
Not necessarily. I hate to say that, but it's.
It's optional.
It's optional, right? So if we have.
It's super summer, I don't want to put that as something that can't be available. Well, it's something to think about, to put our knee on something that may not be available, right?
I think it's not going to be available to a lot of people, right? I mean, like, I don't know who can.
Well, our kids' summers are.
Everybody has different circumstances at different times, you know? Their kid's in college, whatever, anybody's going through at a particular moment.
And they do have payment plans. You don't have to lay out all the money at once.
They do have payment plans.
So we already did a needs assessment or a survey, is that what was done?
We did do a preliminary survey, just, we weren't sure what trips we were doing or what questions had, it was all about chaperoning. It was a lot, you know, we can talk about, you know, what could happen in Europe, because drinking ages are different than that. But that's, for me, that's simple. Your students are never left unattended, they're always with an adult, we have a curfew, they're not out at night. The one thing about EF that I think no one knows is that they run those kids from 6:00 a.m., they're at breakfast, they're on a bus by 6:30, and they go all day long. When they get home at 8:30 after dinner, they're cooked, they're tired, and they want, they want to sleep. So that's the good structure, it's that structure that they go, 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 go.
And this is just for high school, right?
It would just be for high school.
For sophomores and juniors?
For incoming sophomores, juniors, seniors.
Got it.
So not someone who's, who's a senior, you know?
Graduating.
And not an incoming freshman who's really still a eighth grader.
One of the things that strikes me is, and you've thought a lot about this, so there's a lot of nuance, but just to be really transparent with parents, so that they understand, first off, sort of the Byram Hills EF relationship part, that's legal part of it, is just practical. And then, and then just what happens on these trips. Like in Washington, for example, when they go to Washington, they have, I guess, like a nightly security guard, you know, sitting on the floor of the hotel. I'm assuming that that's not going to be reality of what probably happens in Europe. So just so parents know that, just so like, there's full information, and then they can make the right decision for their kid or for their family.
And that's what the informational sessions are there for, so that parents can say, okay, I'm using Bell Italia as an experience, okay, we're going to Italy. What are the, what is the access that students have to get out at night? You know, what's the size of the hotels? Is it this massive Marriott, or is it a more smaller? And they do use smaller hotels that aren't as big. They're not as fancy as what our students are used to either. So that's a cultural experience as well that they have to get used to. And that's where we, I don't know if you had to deal with EF at all, but you could literally call EF and say, these are my concerns, how can you answer these questions? And they're very responsive like that.
So we have the information sessions, are they scheduled already? And will there be an EF person attending them?
We have not scheduled them yet, and EF is more that, they were willing to come here tonight, you know, to zoom in and say, we're willing to talk to whomever there's a concern for.
An immediate next step you asked about is, we are currently reviewing our policy on travel. We had a meeting, Jen and Gina and I, with our lawyer about it, and they're reviewing it right now, and will get back to us, and we'll be bringing that to the policy committee. And then that will be coming to the board. So that's step one. We have to have your approval on some modifications of the policy that allows us to have some type of involvement while still having these sort of unsanctioned trips.
So can we expedite that process, so we could think about possibly doing this in 2024?
We can start having informational sessions, that won't preclude us from having that. We could always then pull out if, say, you all decide we're not going to change this policy, and we feel like this isn't a good idea.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're doing it, I just want to be sure.
We need to do both concurrently.
Exactly. We'll do it concurrently, and let that policy have its time. We don't want to rush that process, because we want you to have time to really ask a lot of questions about it, because it is a change.
But then it sounds like 2024 might be out of the question 18 months prior, which is.
Well, yes and no, because there's different ships. So the one that's definitely out of the question for 2024 is the Leadership Summit. She said, I spoke to her in November, she said, that's been booked. So, you know, if we want to do leadership for 2025, we have to plan it this September, is when we have to get in and try to get our numbers solidified. And that won't allow us a lot, I mean, you have to get your numbers upfront, because they won't, there's just no, there's no room. That one closes. Anything else they can make accommodations for?
We have, we do have.
A little bit. Yeah, there's a little.
I don't want to rush this process, because there's a lot of safety concerns, there's a lot of legal concerns, there's a lot of liability concerns. And we need time to digest everything, and read everything. And that will do through policy, and then conversations with the attorney.
Comfort for parents is, I think, paramount, because you are sending your kid without you with their passport. Like you said, identity theft to a foreign country with what are they going to do? Especially if they've never been to a different country. The cultural differences could be enough to send a kid or a parent into, you know, a little bit of an anxious moment. So it is something that we have to talk about.
And I'm just curious, because also, just to know what, you know, well, how many kids would want to sign up for it, families would be interested, just because they're, as you said, a lot of our kids are, you know, booked up over the summer. So just be curious to know.
And that's the other important thing about doing it this far in advance, is because they do do a lot of things over the summer that require, you know, you start planning the year before what they're doing the following summer. So it's only fair to give them the opportunity to have the options, what they want to do.
That's great, that's very exciting. Anyone have any more questions?
Thank you for doing that.
So much for all your.
And we'll continue working on service trips, yes.
Yay. So the next thing we'll hear, no, we're not yet. So the next thing we'll hear is from policy.
Right, yeah, so we hope at the next policy committee meeting, we will be bringing this policy to you. And that hopefully will be at the February board meeting, the next policies, the first read. So it'd be another time to ask some more questions. And then we have several board meetings in March where we could follow up and hopefully get an approval as a summary. And if not, and if you need more time, we'll certainly, let's just wait it 25 years.
Hi.
So, you know, we'll take its time, we'll, we want you to do your two submissions.
It's very exciting, though, and it's, we're excited to look at it and see what participation would be from the community. So thank you so much for all that hard work.
That's welcome. Bit of pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying. Chris, thanks for staying. Chris, that was really nice, thank you, Chris.
And then there was one.
I always take.
Good act to Chris. Oh, there you go, thank you, Laurie.
So we could. Tim, do you want to go?
Yeah, so I can be part of my, this is a staff report, it's on an agenda either, so it's one of my, it's on my staff report.
Fine, great, thank you so much.
Okay, so, yeah, I'm a little wrong in presentation, sorry.
So we're going to hear from the staff report.
Slide 99.
I know, it's one of my, I'm going to five presentation. So as part of my staff report, I want to update, provide an update on our literacy curriculum and our literacy study. So as a reminder to the board and to our community, we have kind of focused on literacy for many years. We were starting to look at our literacy curriculum from kindergarten to fifth grade back in 2019. That got interrupted by the pandemic, and so that work got put on hold for two years. We started to pick up that work last year, and this year, we convened the literacy committee. So we did start a literacy study group this year as a way to dive deep into the research behind literacy. There was a lot in the media written about literacy in the past six months, so we wanted to do what Byram Hills likes to do, which is to go slow and study deeply, as we are starting to make some decisions about how we teach children to read and to write. So we've held three meetings so far with our expert consultants. We looked at emergent readers, we looked at novice readers and transitional readers. And we have two more meetings on March 15th and March 17th. And then we'll be summarizing and synthesizing what we've learned from those studies. We've also held two public meetings. We had a principal's coffee at Wampus, and we had a Board of Education conversation last month in December. Those are available on our website. And our next public session is on February 9th as part of our site-based team meeting at 4:00 p.m. at the high school. I invite anyone in the public who wants to attend that. We'll have some discussion about looking at some literacy instructional approaches. And we'll have some teachers modeling and talking about some instruction. And again, our two consultants will be there to answer questions. And we have all of our information, all of the readings we've been doing, and the agendas, and the videos from the public sessions are all on our website at that link, or you can scan the QR code on your screen and see all that information up there. So that's been exciting information. I want to remind the board of some of the work we've been doing. Back in August, I shared with you a couple slides that talked about the curriculum review cycle that I engage in, and where we are in various processes. And I explained to you what happens in each of these four phases. When we look at curriculum, it's a multi-year process, and each phase up here could take less than a year or multiple years. So just to remind you of what I presented at the beginning of the year, that Phase 1, we had the literacy study, which I just talked about. And we also committed to looking at and studying Orton Gillingham. And Kim's going to talk about that in a moment. We got well beyond just studying Orton Gillingham this year. We were looking at piloting some guided reading or small group differentiated instruction in K through 4, and doing read allowance. We're in the middle of that now, and we're finishing up that work. And we'll synthesize our evaluation of that pilot by the end of this year. We have revisited our foundations curriculum. Foundations is our phonics and grammar and vocabulary curriculum for students, kindergarten through third grade. We stopped doing it in third grade a few years ago, because we took another approach, but we brought that back in and felt like, you know, we should bring that back for continuity before we get kids into the upper end of word study, fourth and fifth grade. And we trained all of our new teachers, and some current teachers who had switched grade levels did training in foundations. And then we also were looking at, with Kim, our special education curriculum. Right now, we use Wonder Works, which is related to the Wonders curriculum in the general education classroom, and Kim has been involved in evaluating that curriculum. Peggy is studying our informal reading inventory process. It's where we screen kids' reading abilities three times a year. So we're studying that process, because we were looking at the continuity and consistency of doing that process across all the grade levels. Because the data doesn't mean anything unless we're being consistent in it. So we wanted to make sure that we're all doing it the same way.
Like a reader reliability.
Exactly, so Peggy's been studying that this year at home and home. And then Phase 4, we're revising our Wonders scope and sequence, which all of our grade level teachers have looked at the Wonders. We're now in our third year of implementation, and we're mapping out our scope and sequence to make sure that it flows kindergarten through fifth grade. And then, of course, we'll get our TSS plan. So a lot has been happening this year behind the scenes with literacy. I want to talk about our Orton Gillingham. So this is where I'm going to bring Kim into the conversation, thank you for being here tonight. So I'll just give a few bullet points, and then I want to ask you specifically, if you could talk about what Orton Gillingham is. So we had trained all of our special education teachers from kindergarten to fifth grade, and our reading specialists, we have two reading specialists in this building. Total 22 faculty members received training. And that training was on the Level 1 training, which is a graduate level course. So they all received that 30-hour graduate level course on instruction. And then we are also now offering, this semester and into the summer, we're offering the advanced training. So any of the teachers who took Level 1, who want to take Level 2, that's available to them this year, as well as this spring. And in the summer, we're going to offer that course again. That is through Manhattanville, so teachers register through Manhattanville and can sign up for that. We also are going to offer advanced certification in Orton Gillingham and the practicum, so teachers can actually receive certification, that they are certified to implement Orton Gillingham. And it's a certification, it's a really rigorous process, not ask Kim to explain.
It's a method.
It's a method, it's a method. And Kim will explain that now, so Kim, let me just turn it to you. You mentioned Orton Gillingham. Can you talk about first what it is, and why it's important for teachers to have that skill, or how it's been helpful?
Absolutely, and before I do that, I just want to interject a little bit about what you said. The additional courses we're offering was really based on the teacher feedback. I've been in the district 30 years, this professional development was by far, like, so eye-opening and great training. And I think part of it was because it also just enhances what we're currently doing. It was like, wow, we're doing this, and we could do what we're doing, and even do it for our special education students a little bit better, because it's a different approach. So 22 people participated, and 20 out of the 22 were like, I want more training,[1674.78] So, 22 people participated, and 20 out of the 22 were like, I want more training. I want to take this further. We have teachers that are interested in the advanced certification, which is a lot of work and time-consuming, but they're willing to do it with the best interest of the students and really see the impact of what Orton Gillingham is. So, we did the 30-hour training. We are offering the second course, which is, will work on more of the upper levels like Grade Four, Five, Six, and Seven, working on Latin prefixes and suffixes and base words once we finish the word work from the Course One. So, what Orton Gillingham really is is just a multisensory, like Jen said, it's an approach. It's not a program. It's an approach to teaching reading, and it works really well with our foundations, which is also multisensory, but doesn't go as deep and slow as the Orton Gillingham does. So, it's very direct instruction for a small population of students, so it's not for the general population. But what teachers found was like, this is terrific, because this is what I'm doing with my class, and now I could just start to layer these approaches in with what I'm currently doing.
So, Kim, when you say it's not needed for the general education populations, they don't need that because they are reading and making progress.
They're reading on grade level.
So, this is for students who might be struggling to read, and it's an approach that will help.
As an intervention.
As an intervention.
As an intervention. Because foundations isn't, it's a Tier One or a Tier Two. It's not made for, to be an intervention. You know, we do have other interventions, though, reading interventions that were taking place. We were using PAF for our youngest learners through Grade Two and then Grade Three. We start with Wilson, which is also a foundations program but meant for the intervention part. Both programs, PAF, which is Preventing Academic Failure, both programs are based on the approaches of Orton Gillingham.
So, Kim, you mentioned 30 teachers took part in this?
Twenty-two.
Are those, since it's not applicable really for the Gen Ed populations, are those 22 teachers special ed teachers?
So, 20 of them too are building general ed, not general, reading specialists, that are providing reading support. And I think all students would benefit from this. It's really about a need for the program, and that's what also differentiates special ed from the general ed population is doing some of the specially designed instruction. Because I do know in one of our integrated co-teach classes, one of the special ed teachers were using some of the approaches, and I got feedback from Peggy, like, why general ed teachers are looking for this also now. So, I think, you know, their teachers are talking. They're starting to see how well this transitions into their classroom. Students are responding. I met with a teacher today, because this is like the midpoint where we start to look at student progress in reading. And keep in mind, it is a reading intervention, so it's very small, direct instruction. She has a group of five students who are all reading below grade level in September, and in the six months, three of them made over a year's worth of progress.
Wow.
Yeah, that's, it's impressive. It's, that's great progress, and that's what we want to do. We want to start to, you know, close these gaps in the word work and the decoding, so our students are then on track.
Were those five students already in a small group?
So, it was a small reading group.
So, I'm just wondering, like, were they, do we know, were they benefiting from the Orton Gillingham program?
Approach.
Or approach, or were they benefiting from having this small group construction?
I would think they're both. I would think both. What was done with this small group, it was a lot of Orton Gillingham. As soon as we started in October, teachers started using. We left day one, teachers like, this is, I'm using this, I'm using this. We started a Google Classroom where we're all sharing resources, K through, K through eight. We also had one high school teacher participate, a special educator at the high school, participate also because we have a few students who were still receiving some reading support. So, it was like from day one, and that was, I was like, wow, this is terrific. So, we're continuing not only our work with our teachers with continued professional development, but we're going to meet with an Orton Gillingham fellow the end of this month and the beginning of February, and really look at the scope and sequence of our ELA program and where these approaches and fit into our foundations program.
Kim, if I could back up a moment, you've mentioned a few other special education intervention programs, like the academic failure or PAF and Wilson that we use. And then, we also talked about foundations. Those are all based on helping, they're all part of the intervention process. So, most students make typical progress throughout the year. You look for a year's worth of growth academically in the classroom, and teachers make adjustments to meet the needs of students. If students are not progressing, the teacher will provide some in-class interventions. That's called Tier One, where it's done in the classroom by the classroom teacher. That's what we sort of refer to as our natural differentiation of instruction. How can I help this kid? They're not quite progressing. If a student is still not progressing after Tier One interventions, you go to Tier Two. Tier Two is where maybe a reading specialist comes in or not specialist that's in math, and you do something else that's different, and that's where we might see some of these strategies coming in. And then Tier Three is generally a pullout and more intensive, and that's where these other programs come into place. They're intervention programs for those students who we have tried some interventions within the classroom. They're not progressing. So, it's a more intensive intervention process. So, you want to be clear about that, that we base those needs based on the kids' needs and the data that we're seeing. And then, we might regroup kids who have similar skills that they need and provide the intervention intensively that's relevant for them. And these are all based, so foundations, preventing academic failure, Wilson, all based on sort of Orton Gillingham-type methodology. Is that true?
Not as much foundations as the preventing academic failure and Wilson. They, you know, also, it's very student-directed. So, your teachers are taking data. We're doing informal assessments. We're doing formal assessments and, you know, making decisions about what the student needs based on that data that's being collected.
And is that what you were saying is done three times a year?
This is done much more frequently. This is, this is done like every four weeks, like to see where the student's progressing, what we still need to work on. But this is midpoint. We do IRIs, and we do a reading inventory and update in January. So, the special educators will also, like, we're doing our IRIs. We're also going to do updates on our small reading group interventions to see what their growth has been.
A kid who's in Tier One would be reevaluated after four weeks and potentially move to Tier Two?
Tier One is the general education setting, and where a general ed teacher will just like do things, the teachers do, for a student, you know, maybe some redirection, maybe some scaffolding, just what, you know, good teachings involved. But it's not specific to a student who needs intervention. Tier Two is more intervention, and Tier Three is more intense, pull-out, small-group, prescriptive intervention.
I'm just trying to get a sense of how frequently that reevaluation is done to, to say, okay, this Tier Two is not working. We need to go to the next level.
So, we do it every six weeks for a student, and that also takes place at building level where we have ISTs, where we talk about students and their progress, whether it's in the general ed or students that are classified.
Six weeks is typical. If they're in Tier Three, there's probably more happening, and then it's all targeted based on skill level or need, and there's different types of assessments that could be, is it just reading fluency? Is it decoding? Is it comprehension? Is it fluency? There could be different types of assessments based on different skills you're assessing, what the data shows. But we mentioned IRIs and our iReady data. Each of those are done three times a year to the general education, to all students. So, we do the IRI informal reading inventory, and we do iReady. So, we have all that data for all kids three times a year. These are for kids in Tier Two or Three who need a little more monitoring, progress monitoring, so that we can make those decisions to move a kid back to a lower tier if needed.
Do you feel like this, this new approach is going to need more than six weeks? Like, is that, is that going to change the timeframe?
Yes, I think this approach stays within, lives within the reading program. It's whether the students need to continue with the reading program. So, I know the three students that have made so much progress are going to be regrouped. So, they'll be regrouped in their small group, and we'll keep the others, and that will be differentiated. So, if they continue on this trajectory, those three students will, at some point, no longer need the reading services, which is what we want. We're going to close the gaps. Or, you know, maybe it's like, well, the word work and the decoding and the fluency is great. Now, we're going to work on comprehension. So, can't get really students to comprehend and understand unless they have the basics of phonemic awareness and decoding and the fluency. If you spend all that time and energy doing that, that they're not comprehending what they're reading.
Would it make sense to offer the training to some Gen Ed teachers if there's already been some, you know, inquiries about it and, you know, especially the younger kids coming in?
Yeah, so we're discussing that. There's, some people debate whether it's necessary for general education teachers to have Orton Gillingham. We think step one is for teachers in our integrated co-taught classes, the Gen Ed teacher in that class, because they're actually partnered now with a special education teacher.
Yes.
We think that's going to be our first target, are those teachers who teach the ICT classes, and then we'll consider the general.
Those potentially change every year, right?
It does, right.
What percentage of our students benefit from these Orton Gillingham instruction?
What percentage of our students benefit?
So, what percent of our students are in actual reading programs?
Well, 13% of our total school population is benefiting from the special educators.
In some way.
Yes.
Absolutely.
They're not, no.
That's just IP's.
Yes, students without IP's. So, I would say 20% on each grade level of the 13%. So, if you think, I mean, it's a small number of students that are classified. So, if we have 20 students in first grade, maybe there are five students getting that level.
We have a lot of instructors now who have a lot of background with us now.
And we trained our reading specialists who work with the general education population for Tier One and sometimes Tier Two support, so that could benefit even more students as well. So, those are the students, for example, who might fall below grade level on the state tests that have to get required, not classified students, but then we have to have them mandated intervention service. So, our reading specialists will be working in this methodology as well.
But very often, those are the students then that come to see us, because they're not making progress.
We'll try to keep them out.
What's an example of this method? Like, what?
You want to, you want, you want, oh, there we go. So, here we have gentle Cindy. It's, you know, so the Orton Gillingham method follows a very specific lesson plan. So, the lesson plan, without getting into it, so, it has seven, seven steps of just review, where we're just reviewing. We're going over phonemic awareness, symbol to sound at the alphabet at the lower grades. Then, there's also sound to symbol review. There's a review deck at the lower grades. It would be a review deck of letters and sounds. At the upper, at the upper grades, it would be a review deck of words, where they start to develop that fluency. And then, step seven is where we start to introduce new rules, which, when we're doing a new rule, it is scripted. So, students are getting the same instruction, the same script of how do we start. Like, so today, we're going to learn about gentle Cindy. So, and we'll go through the lesson of gentle Cindy. So, G will say J when it's followed by an E, I, or Y, right? C will say S when it's followed by an E, I, or Y. So, when a student gets this lesson, let's just say in second grade, and maybe doesn't read the word giant correctly in third grade, that third grade teacher is going to review it this way. And it's not just reteaching it. It's having students think metacognitively and understand, like, what is the rule? When does it say G? And be able then to articulate that back. And then, it goes like back into their deck of where now we're reviewing. So, that's where it's very specific to that student. So, Paul's deck is going to look very different than Lisa's deck, because Lisa may have all of her G and J sounds where Paul doesn't.
This is also taught in foundations, because when I recall the beginning days of foundations, they, this is exactly...
This is, and which is why it's, it's been so well, but this is much more, this is much more, not only intensive, but multisensory.
So, there's tactile things which help in terms of reinforcing it in the brain by doing the tactile manipulatives.
A lot of jingles, a lot of like tapping of the jingles and movement within the classroom, visuals. So, here's a great example of when we look at breaking words down, the tiger rule, right? So, we look at tiger versus camel. So, a tiger will beat a camel 75% of the time, because the tiger rule is going to apply 75% of the time. So, what's the tiger rule? Well, when there's a consonant in between two vowels, where you divide the multi-syllabic word, you divide it after the first vowel. So, it's tiger. It's not tigger. Well, unless it's Winnie the Pooh, then it's tiger. So, it's not a tiger, right? So, it's rules like that. But we're going back to that. Every teacher's going back to that same rule when it needs to be. So, the students are hearing the consistency of the same rule. It's a picture of the tiger compared to a camel, where, you know, it's broken down in between the other two syllables. So, it's the consistency of all that. And also, like, you know, like I said, once again, like the tapping of it and the getting up. It's a tiger, and that multisensory that so many of our special education students need.
Is there an opportunity with Orton Gillingham to, like, have it be modular so that there are parts, parts of it that the Gen Ed teachers could use or integrate into their classroom without having to go through this intensive training?
You're not, you can't really deliver Orton Gillingham without a training, right? So, all of our teachers are trained, whether it's, if they're delivering PAF, Preventing Academic Failure, they have gone through the training. If they are delivering Wilson, they have gone through the Wilson training. So, the same holds true with Orton Gillingham. You're not trained unless you go through the training. Can you use parts of this? Absolutely. But it's not then an authentic, true Orton Gillingham experience.
But if it's not needed, if the whole authentic program's not needed in Gen Ed, I'm just thinking, like, could there be?
Someone could push you.
So, well, that may, like, turnkey a bit. That may be able to happen once we look at the scope and sequence with, we're working with the OG fellow. She's a fellowship. So, she's going to work with us with our scope and sequence to really see, like, where do these syllable patterns fit in with foundations in kindergarten, and where are we going to make sure we finish by kindergarten, the students will have these skills within the foundations program and do within our special, for our special class and for our reading groups, as well as then for first, second, third. And so, once we do and develop that, then that would probably be available to the UICT.
So, that's our next step, is Kim is working on mapping out the curriculum for this in the special class. And she's starting that work now, that will continue over the summer.
It is exciting. It's really, and it's so exciting because the teachers were so excited about it, like, you know, like to hear, like, wow, I can't wait to use this. And in such a short period of time, going into classrooms and seeing, like, we just did this three days ago.
They're getting instant feedback.
Are using it and loving it, and...
How do the kids like it?
The kids love it. The kids like it. There's a lot of movement, so kids like it. The, the person who provided the training also is very available to the teachers, and sometimes we get questions from parents, and they'll shoot out that question to get an answer, when it's like very specific to students who have dyslexia or dysgraphia. It was also great to learn more about that from her and from the perspective of teaching it. You know, we don't diagnose, but we do have students who have been diagnosed with dysgraphia and dyscalculia and...
Do the parents know that you're teaching us a new?
I believe so. I believe, you know, well, the students who are in the reading group, yes, the teachers have shared that information with the parents that they're using Orton Gillingham approach. I don't know if parents are aware that, you know, we're now starting to build it into the foundations, because we haven't done that scope and sequence yet, but they'll soon find out.
I think it's important to note that most of our students progress with our phonics program. There's 75 to 85% are really at grade level, and Tier One interventions will work for those students. So, we're really talking about the population who isn't progressing at the rate that is comfortable for us, and we're at grade level where we need to do interventions, and that's where this is becoming helpful for us. And it was something we started to talk about last spring. We put Kim on this, and she organized this training in a relatively short time.
Thank you so much.
Oh, pleasure.
So, much appreciate you being here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Kim?
No.
Let you. Thank you.
Good evening. Good bye. I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
So, I think we'll hop on 10.1.
Are you on 10.1? One more time.
Very, very timely. Review policy.
That's policy.
Kelly, you ready to do your budget?
No.
He's going to film you.
You're such a nice, you're such a loving presentation, Kelly.
What did you do with that?
I don't know. Is it, is it white? I did that.
I think they're all listening.
I don't know many racialized, just to figure out.
Or we're just talking on, we're talking for a moment.
Yeah. Gina, even if we're not...
We're not, I want to do.
No, no.
Gina, you may only go. 10.1, review of policies. So, we'll go first. Okay, we're going to do a second read of 4, 5, 3, 2, 1, 1, 11, 20, 11, 20 dash R, 23, 40. Okay, we're going to do a second read of 4532, 1120, 1120 dash R, 2340, 2360. And then a first read of 0150, 4315.1, 8123, 4327, 6830, 6830.1, and 6830 dash R.
We haven't been here in a while.
The policy committee's still in meeting, so thanks.
Yeah.
To you, Marco, Patrick, Mia, and Jason, and Jen, Gina, and I working together. So we answered a lot of questions about the, those policies for a second read at the last board meeting. If there's any other questions, we're happy to dive into that. And if not, we'll jump into the first three policies.
Sure. So we're going to start with policy 0150, which is the Human Immune Deficiency, HIV, and Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome, AIDS policy. This policy, as you'll see, was initially adopted in 2004. And after a release of a guidance document from New York State in 2019, there are some significant changes in terms of the content of the policy. And I'll just tap on those aspects of it. The first is that this, this calls, the regulation does call for a specific policy, as we discussed in our policy committee meeting, specifically focused on HIV and AIDS. That is required to have specific attention around this particular topic. This policy discusses a student as well as an employee's right who has been diagnosed with either of these conditions to both ensure that their, they, their situation is kept confidential and private, as well as their ability to be educated and/or to work in a public and safe environment. We also have the obligation to instruct all students, which I'll talk about in the next policy, regarding the nature, the transmission, preventative measures and treatment regarding HIV infections pursuant, again, to the regulation. Additionally, it affords any student or employee who has been diagnosed with such condition to receive reasonable accommodations within the setting so that they may learn and/or work in the best way possible, given their situation. Also, as I mentioned, the confidentiality piece. And all, and that the district does not have the right to test anyone for HIV antibody testing or HIV testing. However, according to OSHA regulations, in the event that there is such exposure to, for any employee or student that has been exposed, exposed to any bodily fluid, it is recommended, and we can request that there be HIV or N, and/or antibody testing. However, of course, that can be refused. But we do retain the right to request a physical overall if and when that situation occurred. We also, as we do every year as part of our employee compliance training, we do train on universal precautions for any employee and/or student who possibly may be exposed to bodily fluid and/or when have to, when someone may have to administer a first aid. So that is 0150.
So when there's instruction, is it, because this is like K-12, is it every year? Or is it at certain grade levels?
So I'm going to talk about that specific HIV AIDS instruction. Yes. Yep. And, all right. So the next policy, 4315 dash one, is exactly what Scott just had mentioned in terms of HIV, AIDS, and instruction. And again, this is calling for our comprehensive health program to ensure that we are instructing students age appropriately, of course, as it pertains to HIV and AIDS, in terms of the nature of the disease, the transmission and/or prevention of the disease. Parents do have the right to request that their child opt out of that particular aspect of the curriculum. And also that we, as a district, through our Health and Wellness Advisory, maintain a council that looks at this curriculum and instruction, has an opportunity to evaluate and recommend any changes. And that it really needs to consist of various stakeholders, many of whom we have currently. But there are a couple that we will be working on in terms of securing to meet the requirements. So to your question, Scott, this is part of our health curriculum. It is for students K-12, but obviously age appropriate. And in terms of, Tim, in terms of it being taught every year, I don't believe so.
Yeah, so it's generally, it's generally at the upper grades in our health class where it's taught in most detail. But there is some aspect about safety through, certainly generally in middle school, about HIV transmission. As you know, I've- So this isn't like kindergarten? No, no, no. But you do talk about safety and things like that at different levels. I've written to you about that we're reviewing our health curriculum now and we hired Mike Fileno as a consultant who has been engaged in, he teaches at the college level and is very active in current, in current health education issues. So he's working with Rob, with our health teachers, in updating our health curriculum. And part of it has been HIV AIDS curriculum, as well as other aspects of sensitive issues like Aaron's Law, which is about child sexual abuse that we have to be teaching our students about. So he's been helping our teachers on ways we deliver that instruction. We're shifting our health curriculum from a, like a fact-based health instruction to a skills-based. The skills-based is like, you know, what do you do in situations? Like, give kids the skills to deal with healthy choices and the health issues that they encounter. So it's more of a skills-based approach.
Mike has worked with a couple of other districts in Westchester doing exactly this.
Exactly. And I, we reach out to him all the time. He goes, I know a lot about that. And he works with us. He's really great and very up on the cutting edge in, in health education. So it's great to have him. And he knows our district. Those are the best.
Okay. Thank you.
And then policy 8123, precautions and procedures for exposure to blood and bodily fluids. This policy was originally adopted in 2007. There's minimal changes to this, but again, this is just, again, in our compliance training annually that we ensure that all of our employees watch and attest to. Again, this is looking at the universal precautions that would be followed should someone be exposed to any blood or bodily fluid, as well as how we dispose and how we handle any materials or anything that's contaminated as well. And it is, again, enforced here that we are responsible for providing this training to all our employees.
And then I'll talk about policy 4327, which is homebound instruction. Homebound instruction is different than homeschooling. Homebound is instruction is when there's a medical reason a kid needs to be out of school. That could be a kid, you know, has had a surgery on their leg or it could be mental health reasons as well. There's a process for that and there has been a plan in place that we have been delivering homebound instruction, but the regulations have dramatically changed. That go into effect now and also some major changes next year. So we'd have to revise our policy to actually change the regulations. So there's, process is still basically the same where a parent has to make a request for that and we have five days to respond to that request. We either accept it or deny it. And it has to have a medical signature that this child needs this to be out of school for this reason. And then we follow a process. If you have any doubts about it, we check with our own doctor to make sure that it makes sense. And some of the major changes in this, there's, there's two major changes. One is they're increasing the amount of time that districts are required to provide instruction. So K-5, it used to be 10 hours a week, they're going up, or five hours a week, they're going up to 10 hours a week. And at the secondary, it was 10 hours a week, they're going up to 15 hours per week. So that was a big change in the increased amount of time that we would have to provide instruction for. The second big piece, which I bring up because it does affect my work, which is that district now has to provide an instruction plan. It's a little closer aligned to homeschool, which is what I do now. If someone's doing homeschooling, I have to put the homeschool plan. Now we have to make sure we have a, a written plan. In the past, we didn't have a written plan and that wasn't required. But we would work on providing tutors for the children who would be out. Now we actually have to have this written plan. So those things are the biggest changes in this policy. And this policy also outlines an appeal process should be denied, having homebound instruction. And there's a process for, for appeal. If there's no questions, I'll go on to the next group of policies, which are all related to expense reimbursement, which is policy 6830, 6830.1, and 6830 Regulation. Regulation, remember, it's just the procedures that implement this. There are just some changes and updates to this policy. So just a few minor things have been changed, clarification of language and adding some references in the first general policy to make some things more clear about reimbursement. I will say, first of all, that the reimbursement process, Kelly's got really tight procedures in place. And we checked with Susan on if we actually follow that regulation and we do. That's one of the first things we do with regulations is like, do we actually do this? And then, do we actually do this? And we get good feedback occasionally from our auditors. But I think overall, overall, our expense and reimbursement process is pretty tight. So we feel good about this. We just clarified a few items of this, particularly in the regulation. I will point out, I'll point out, first of all, we're very prudent in expenses. So these are things like, if I go to a conference and travel, you have to make sure that I'm utilizing the cheapest resources, flying coach or not flying me first class when I go to a conference or something. Travel reexpenses, reimbursement follows the IRS's federal reimbursement, whatever that number is. So the regulations outline a few specifics about it in terms of the process for reimbursing individuals for expenses. And it does give some ability for the district. Sometimes we will hold to for efficiency, say, we might meet with the principals and we need to have a meeting. We do it over lunch. We may buy principal's lunch. That happens on occasion, but we try to minimize that type of thing. But we only do it when there's a time, you know, the principal's time is valuable. So we don't want to have to break for lunch during a meeting or it's a way to just be efficient, let's have a working lunch. Principals are kind to agree to that. They're, they could be taking a lunch break and eating, but I don't know many of our administrators that actually take that many lunches. None of us do. But, you know, but we're always working because there's things to do. But, you know, it's, it's for things like that. But there's a pretty tight process in terms of the reimbursement. So you can see the track changes in there and some of the things have been clarified and tightened up a little bit in the language of these policies.
Great. Any questions to the policy? All right, good. So can I have a motion for approve second read for 4532, 1120, 1120 dash R, 2340, 2360, and a first read of 0150, 4315.1, 8123, 4327, 6830, 6830.1, and 6830 dash R?
Someone's second.
Thank you. All those are favorite. Thank you. Thank you to Tim and Gina and the Policy Committee and Jen.
Thank you. A lot of work.
Appreciate it. Okay. Onto new business, 11.1 textbook adoption. Do we need to speak about it?
Sure. Let me just speak briefly about the textbook adoption. So last year, you approved, this is for an online program, which is for our startup course, which is the entrepreneurship program, which was new last year. And last year, I brought forward the curriculum for the year one, which was called Incubator. This is the second year curriculum, which is called Accelerator. So in your packet, you have the textbook adoption form. So we reviewed the same programs as last year, which was looking at some various programs. And we still think this, by Uncharted Learning, is the best program for students. This year's going really well with that. You also see the course description for startup. And what's exciting about this curriculum is it, the second year curriculum focuses on things like time and project management. Students have to learn as they're trying to take their business to scale. They focus on how they manage all the work they have to do to start their business. They talk about financing and banking. They look at customers and sales, the legal and business regulations, marketing and solution development and testing. So those are all the major units of the year two curriculum. So we're already having conversations now with the teachers about putting that curriculum together. So this is the, again, the online curriculum, which is published by Uncharted Learning. And it is a continuation of the current year one program. So before I go on, I just want to show a few pictures because I'm very excited about this aspect of, of startup. As I've talked about with you, a really exciting part of the entrepreneurship program at the high school is the work with parents and our community members, working with our kids, focusing on real issues. 17 mentors who have volunteered to work with the 17 teams. So every team is working on their own startup project, was assigned a mentor. And we had back in the fall, what was called Mentor Matchup Day. So the mentors came in and they met with the various groups of students in a class and the students had to pitch their idea. And the mentors decided which ones they wanted and it sort of gave a secret little order, like their first, their top three choices. But the students were also selecting their top three choices of mentors. And then the teacher would match them up. So that was pretty exciting that the mentors didn't realize when it came in that they were actually also being selected. So that was sort of fun. Then these are some pictures of our students in here as kids are pitching their ideas back in the fall. And then the mentors were like deciding on which ones they wanted. And now the mentors come in, every couple of weeks, they actually come into the classroom and work with the kids. So these are those mentors coming in and they're meeting with the kids and giving them feedback on their ideas. And the kids will have to present. They, they ask them really hard questions and they get really into this feedback. And the students were really scared at first. They're like, they know some of these people and they think they're big wigs in the, in the industry. So they're, oh my God.
Well, because they are.
Because they are. There are some big wigs. They have to present, they ask them really challenging questions. But it's very exciting to go in and see our parents working with our kids in the classroom. It's such an exciting aspect of this program. And I happened to be in the guidance office today and a kid came in and I was waiting to see Christina Wilson. And I started talking to the kid. He was there to like work on his course selection with his counselor for next year. And I said, well, what classes are you taking? And he mentioned startup. I said, oh, you're in the startup program. How do you like that? He goes, it's really good. It's really interesting that I get to work on something that is something I'm interested in. And I asked him about working with the mentors. He goes, yeah, that's a really interesting part. It's a little bit scary when they come in and you have to be ready to like answer their questions. It's not the teacher anymore and they can't sort of ground nose the teacher or sort of finesse it. They said, it's, it's really challenging. He asked me what the second year curriculum was. I said, well, working on that right now. We're actually getting the board to approve that tonight. But I said, you actually get to now take your business idea and scale it up. And his eyes got really big. He goes, really? Yeah. You can actually maybe get some funding and start working on the business. And he thought that was very exciting that now they actually get to, after all this work of a year, working with their mentors, try to launch their business. When do the judges come in? In spring. So the first judging happens in February. We just scheduled that date where they do their minimum viable product pitch. That's where they can get a small amount of money to maybe, they might have to design an app or build a small prototype or spend a little bit of money to get to the next level. Then in April, all the students are going to pitch to a panel and then five will be selected for the final pitch, which takes place on May 22nd. That's that final pitch event where five kids compete. One is selected to go to the national, well, to submit to the national competition. And that's where we're looking to give them a small amount of money to have some seed money to start doing some work with it this summer. Right. Yeah. So these were some pictures. And then we also did an expo, sort of like a practice round in December, right before the holiday. This was in the library and all 17 teams presented. And students and faculty members came in and listened to the kids' pitch. So it was a way to practice their pitches, getting ready for February. Oh, the student right there is Isaac, who I was, is he there? Yeah, Isaac, I believe, is the kid on the right. He was the one I talked to today. His, his idea is checkmate. That is where you go to a restaurant and they're designing an app where you don't have to wait for the waiter to bring you your bill. You could just pay automatically and walk out. So that's their idea. I think I just told that comfortably. So I hope no one steals their idea.
I think they have that at T F K.
There's something like that, but there's, for some reason, there's a little different and I don't know the reason.
That's exciting.
Here are kids where, you know, Mr. Walsh is interrogating them. So he came in and these kids had to pitch their ideas. So the expo was very exciting. A lot of students came in for it. It was also a way to advertise to the kids who were now selecting the courses in January. It was a way for them to sort of see what the program was about. And some of the mentors showed up, like in that picture. So it was-
Is this mostly juniors or is there a lot of seniors too?
There are some seniors, yeah. There's a lot of seniors this year in the first year. We're sort of seeing the trend. We only have a handful of new seniors taking the year one. I think it'll be mostly juniors taking the year one in the future. So the expo was really successful as a way for kids. And I have to thank you for approving the curriculum lecture. I hope you'll approve this one tonight. And thank the foundation for giving us the seed money for our startup of startup.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Amazing.
Very exciting. So can I have a motion to approve 11.1 textbook adoption?
Sir.
Sir.
All those in favor? Thank you so much. Let's go to 11.3, the 2023-24 district calendar first read.
Sure. So the proposed calendar, as you'll see, includes 183 school days for our students and 186 days for our faculty. Our first day of school is for students is proposed to be on Tuesday, September 5th. And our last day of school would be Wednesday, June 26, 2024. This calendar allows for two superintendent conferences on August 30th and 31st, prior to students arriving. And then again, a Friday, March 15th, 2024, for the third superintendent's conference day. Again, it allows for all holidays that fall on school days. And very similar to last year, there's a couple of holidays that do not fall on- And very similar to last year, there's a couple of holidays that do not fall on school days this year and rather on the weekends. So these are the ones that are highlighted that will be on our school day.
Great. Any questions? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the first read of the calendar? Second? All those in favor? Well done Gina. Very good Gina, thank you. That's no joke.
Yes, high school renovation. So we have some renderings from KSQ. These are some of the original renderings that they gave us. Recognizing that this was well above the budget that we were prepared for. And also recognizing that they had to reduce some of the budgetary items for us. And we are in a time period where Kelly and I do not think it's fiscally responsible for us to go out with this request for the renovation right at this point. And keeping in mind that we are looking for those renovation monies to come from our capital reserve. We are postponing this until next year at this time currently. And we will spend a part of this next year rolling out our proposed plan to the board and the community. But I thought you might like to see, yeah. You might like to see what we're talking about. So when you're in the high school, three is the hallway when you are near the library. One is the library space, two is currently our lecture hall, which was created in the 1968 or something. It hasn't been changed.
It's that driver's ed.
Yes, driver's ed.
Is that the term?
Yeah. And four is a mixture of offices and workspaces. So you're talking about over 16,000 square feet. Why is it doing that?
What's that?
I don't know. Okay, so if you take a look at this, you'll see some additions and I'm going to go through them by number. But if you look to the left of the library, we were actually looking to create a small courtyard option and if possible, a large courtyard option. The library configuration would be different. And to the right of the library, you'll see, under the demarcation closet, which I don't even know what that is, you'll see a bunch of meeting rooms that would have glass walls on either side. And then all the way to the right, tiered, large group instruction. So, but I need to give you a better idea of what that looks like. This right here is that if you look on the bottom, the part that's in the square, these are those classrooms.
Don't do that.
It's okay, classrooms that would be between the library and the hallway. Okay, and that is what we're looking at. We're looking at glass walls where small groups of kids can be sitting in there working, right? So now you have a viewpoint from the library, you have a viewpoint from the hallway, but very similar to IBM on the right-hand side where, you know, we're coloring in the glass. So it's not a distraction to the kids while they're working. So they're not having, you know, kids occupied and distracting. Next, we have this multipurpose large and small group instruction. Currently where you go in for the principal's coffees is around that area. And we are looking to have a demountable wall between that to make it into a larger space for when we have larger pieces. That is what that space would look like.
That's great.
See this? Isn't that so weird? All right, so a little bit more into the library and what we would be looking for, for the look on the right-hand side. And on the left-hand side, that would be driver's ed lecture hall, okay? So creating greater steps so that you could put tables there for kids to be working together, both on the bottom and on each of the tiers. So taking away, let's say there are eight levels now, making that into maybe three levels where you can actually have tables that fit six or eight on each of the levels and changing it. But at the same time, it could still be turned into any kind of lecture hall. All right, ask here. There's a circulation desk giving you an idea of colors and woods that we were looking at. All right, and the food kiosk in the middle. We have kids who have a universal lunch period right now, we need other opportunities for them. This hallway would actually kind of serve as a kiosk area. It would be called the learning commons, so it would feel unto itself as a sort of like college campus.
Kids currently eat in the library, so they get their food in the cafeteria and walk to the.
That's going to be very helpful.
Yes, it will. Yep, and just giving you an idea of defining the space in the library. Creating some stepped up areas with some flexible seating for kids, they love that.
That looks great.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
The large is my favorite part, but I'll get to it. The large courtyard and the smaller courtyard, and we are considering these as fenced in areas. So if you have sort of large, picture large wood walls on the outside of this so that we're not afraid our kids are going to escape. That they can go outside. Yeah, well, you know, yeah. But they can go outside and enjoy that city. So we also know that it's a secured space, that we're not, you know, having animals in there and whatever else. Just to give you a great idea of what the outside looks like. And any board questions you might have, but just my recommendation that we are slowing this down and we're going to take a gentle progression through the course of this year to talk about phases of the process for the board to be a part, an active part of what we're looking at regarding cost and what the board feels and my recommendation of what we should do. So that is that.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, yes, we'll move on to the 11.5 demographers report.
Okay, super fast. Demographers long range planning report. So these gains are expected in the next 10 years with an increase of 158 students or so or 6.9% by 2032. This is a projection peak period. So if you just look at the K to 2, we're looking at peaks of 577 in 2023, that's next year. Third through fifth grade, we're looking at it for 2026, 619. 2029, keeping in mind that these kids are moving up, right? This is why you're saying it this way. 2029, 634 will be the peak at Crittenden and 818, peak at the high school in 2032. The district is expecting 2,467 students in 2031. Now, these aren't accurate, right? But they've always been pretty good projections for enrollment. You know, we could not have foreseen that we would have had enrollment growth after COVID. I mean, there are different variables that exist, like generally, I think they do a pretty good job. Housing turnover was at the lowest level from 2011 to 20. But the lowest level in 2011, when 110 sales were reported of homes, subsequently we have 225 units that sold in 2021. And then this, if you take a look at the median price on the right-hand side, the number sold in the middle and bottom, you'll see we're at 225. And the median price was at close to 1.3 million, which was also the highest that we've been in that time period. Nothing more than interesting, but I thought it was interesting. All right, future projections. Airport campus is expected, there's been a little bit of a change in those initial plans from the time our demographer did this report. So we are now looking at for airport campus, 50 age restricted apartments and 120 fee simple townhomes that are most likely going to be age targeted, but they're not going to be age restricted. They're going to have first floor master bathrooms though, which sometimes lends itself more to an age targeted group. So we're going to be expecting building there and that is Toll Brothers. And they are really progressing with the town right now on that. The Eagle Ridge, that is also going to be age restricted in townhomes. Mariami, I mean, there are a bunch in there, a bunch of different, lots of things. Mariami is now, I mean, it's gone through, I don't know, six or seven iterations of plans and people. But I know that they're engaged in discussions again. And then last but not least, Bedford Road, that is actually the lumberyard. And I think that they've gotten close to figuring out that construction as well. So construction that I see potentially happening sooner rather than later might be at airport campus and Bedford Road. I would say in the next couple of years. So just to give you an idea of some growth. And our projected enrollment that I spoke to you about before, by each of the buildings and then a total of 2,459.
So do they factor that new building into here or not really?
No.
They don't?
Nope. And that's it, and I'm ready for superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, we'll go right.
Okay, write the superintendent report. All right, here we have our student highlights. So first, Pink the Rink, 11th Annual Pink the Rink Game. Yes, 7,500, over $7,500 raised for cancer research, just an amazing job on part of those kids. Samantha Milowicz, I've been hearing her name all day. Well, finalist chosen in the Regeneron Science Talent Search, yay for Samantha. I know her well and like her so much and she really is just so deserving of this. She's one of the 40 finalists. She received, I think, $25,000 and now she's going to compete for more than 1.8 million. She used a novel 3D model that mimics the brain's protective layer, the blood-brain barrier, to identify a protein involved in tissue damage from traumatic brain injuries. With a combination of several techniques, she demonstrated that inhibiting the production of the protein MNP9 restores healthy barrier function post-injury, providing insight into the protein's potential for therapeutic innovation. Samantha, way to go. She's also an EMT and a volunteer firefighter and a photographer extraordinaire. She's really, she's got it all, yeah. And a very affable individual as well. All right, so we have Kenzie Lage and we have Amelia Athens. Kenzie Lage is the one in the business suit. She had superintendent fun time with me and dressed up for the occasion and she invited her friend, Amelia, who's in the pink sweatshirt. And part of the superintendent fun time, and this was a donation made to the BHF for superintendent fun time. Part of that was I asked Kenzie what she would like to do for the day. And one of those things was to go back to Coman Hill and see her Coman Hill teachers. So she went into, they went into all of their classrooms. These two young ladies became friends in first grade at Coman Hill and are still best friends to today. They're in fourth grade now. We had a great time visiting in Coman Hill. We went to the high school where they became official members of the faculty administration and had their badges and complimentary cookies. And we went into the media center. Oh, first they came here and they sat in their offices and they did some work. That's the new Gina Cunningham on the right and the new Jenna Hama on the left. And right here they are with their secretaries. And we also had them seeing some of their teachers. And then here, they're doing our student highlights. Hello, Byron Hills School community. I am here today with Kenzie Lage and Amelia Athens. We're going to help me to present our student highlights.
Take a look at the sensory path at Coman Hill. This BHF grant allows students to hop, skip and tiptoe to the floors to lean into walls with their hands to give them an outlet and bring off some of their energy. It will help develop skills including balance and hand-eye coordination. The entire Coman Hill community will be able to use these wonderful sensory pathways throughout the years.
Here are some student reflections about the sensory path.
Thank you for supporting this new space at Coman Hill. Five seniors are among the top 300 scholars in honor that recognizes their meaningful and important independent scientific research.
The 70 finalists were chosen from almost 2,000 students who entered the math and science competition. On January 24th, only 40 of the 300 students will be named finalists, who will compete for more than $1.8 million in prizes at a week-long competition in March. And the top award is $250,000.
Congratulations to all the students. Congratulations to the girls' tennis players on beginning rank, low hood players of the year.
Congratulations to the Byron Hills High School Vex Robotics Team placing ninth out of 24 teams on Saturday, the 9th, at Folsberg Vex Robotics Spin-Up Regional Tournament. And the team was comprised of Dylan Schulman, Greg Postian, Xander Verstiel and Megan Verstiel.
All four students represented Byron Hills with strength, intelligence and sportsmanship.
Seriously, you can't get any fewer.
On the 14th, the Byron Hills debate team traveled to Massachusetts to compete at the Lexington Innovational. Two teams reached the elimination rounds for the first time this year. The teams consisted of Alyssa Chen and Lindsay Cody and John Cavada and Alexandra Zona.
The speech team traveled to Regis High School in Manhattan and competed at the Sister Raymond Speech Tournament. At the event, Arne Saxena made the finals in declamation. Allegra finished third in oral interpretation. And Aiden Aldia Lustig took second in original oratory.
Aiden achieved the award of premier distinction at this event. This is the highest award given by the National Speech and Debate Association and is achieved by only 3% of all students who compete in speech and debate nationwide. Aiden is the third Byron student to achieve this prestigious award. The Winter Art Show is a great success. The show featured artwork by students in 6th through 12th grade, including drawings, painting, sculptures, metal smithing, photographs and graphic course.
Goodbye everybody and go podcast. I love that.
That's going to make people want to build them.
Yeah, that's right. What am I going to talk next? Right. All right, the only other thing that I have for the superintendent's report is an update on board goals. Seeing that it's 10:35, but I also did have these in December. But I can do them at the next board meeting for the superintendent's report.
That's fine.
Is that a good idea?
Yes, that's a good idea. Thank you Jen, anything else? Are that, we're good? Okay.
I do have some staff reports, but they can certainly wait until February?
That would be fine.
I think I'll mind.
Okay, great, thank you so much, Tim. You guys are good. Anybody else have anything? Let's see. Any board reports? Or can they wait also?
We've got quite a lot of turns since the last meeting to go to the PTSA board meetings. A lot of stuff going on there. Nothing that needs to be done.
There's a very nice legislative forum that if anybody can make it, it's virtual. So, but that one, it's a night. That's right, with the two of us hosting.
And then now, can I just have 15.1, approved this board minutes? I didn't have any change. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes? Nope, okay, so can I have a motion to approve them at second? And all those in favor? Great, and then can I just have a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor? Good night everyone, thank you for a great meeting tonight.